Why do you put my friend forward? Just like we just played. Well, it's not in the deal. Every Christmas. There is such meaningful words. It was big and small. It's like sitting back. And just feel this one day. Can you pass? You're down here.
Yes. Ready to hear. I have one of their ready guys.
That's pretty, that's not bad. I suppose. I want to stop. God. Let's talk to the other. Also, I said.
We were. It's off. It's getting on your mind. Oh, okay.
You think I do. I think some video you don't respond. I don't think it's a very good. Of course, to be with my kids. Six years. Old car.
It turns to me.
Six.
I mean, it's your wife. Oh, yes.
John, I was very blind.
Yes, we can. For twenty twelve, yes, sir. Can you hear us?
Because we have lots of. It was also. It's nice. Is it all this? Was it all this year? Is it this year?
They know where it is. So now. It's been completely. Good evening, returning crocs. We heard you serve. Do you hear us? Here, Rose. To you. Sure, sure. Someone needs to use their mic.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you for attending the Wednesday, May twenty eighth. We're trying to make a school sport meeting. Please join me in saving the political leaders.
I turn the pages. The flag of the United States of America. And to bring our rich citizens. One nation, under God. Universal with liberty and justice.
Can I please have the reading of the mission of the.
Mission statement. Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
And the vision statement. Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service. Great. I'm moving on to celebrations. Doctor Wright.
President Picking Trustee, something I ask them. Mrs. Bridget Hazelbaker, our director. Student Services and Communication approached the podium to acknowledge tonight's honorees. Welcome, Mrs. Hazelbaker.
Good evening. Um, it's gonna work on. People can't hear you very well. So we're gonna get the microphones on for you. Um, our first celebration is going to be the Richmond High School BPA. Students that travel to Nationals. Can you all step up this way, please? Just line up so they can all get a game. And this is not everyone. We had several that weren't able to make it tonight as well. Now, we've had BPA here before, but who would like to be the spokesperson? Right. Oh, good. No, no. Look, Miss Cow, please. No, come up. Come in. Go Lucy. Good, good, good. Someone come up. All right. So we please introduce or have people introduce themselves or tell us what you competed in and what this trip was like for you.
Oh, you want me to start? Please. Okay, um, I'm Lucy Cowish, and I competed in a group, actually. It was me and my sister Alice and Avery Vanderburg. Um, and we did user experience design, which means we make sort of a social media campaign for our company. It was a small business. And then we made a presentation on that and we just talked about that. So that's what we did. We got fifth in the nation and it was a lot of fun. I loved traveling and meeting the people that were also trying to learn about business and. So, yeah, um, I'll turn the time over to Ashley. Do you want to say? He just like will go down there. That's great. Um, yeah. Can you come up here for me now?
Um, I'm Ashley Roswell. I'm in Medical Administration. So for this, it required me to translate. Um, doctor's notes into a billable format for insurance to be able to know how to pay.
And how did you do in Nationals?
Not well. I got thirty, thirty-sixth or thirty-sixth.
Was it your first time to Nationals?
Uh, no, this is my second time. Last year was for medical coding.
Nice.
Um, I'm Emma French, and I competed in entrepreneurship. And so I made a business plan, and then I went to Nationals and I presented my business and I got eight in my section.
What was your business?
Uh, my business, it's called Cutie Pie Pops. So it's pie on sticks. So I think of a cake pop, but instead of cake, it's pie.
Tasty.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. What year in high school? Senior?
Oh, I'm a senior.
A junior.
Junior. It's all for. Yeah.
My name's Kush Patel, and me and Gavin Mitchell had a virtual event where.
Who's Gavin?
Presented on.
You're average.
In Tenefish in the world, and we got third in the nation.
Third in the nation. All right. So and again, what grade are you in?
Oh, I'm in, uh, I'm going to be a sophomore.
I'll be a sophomore.
I'm Gavin Mitchell. I was on the esports team with him where we got third place. And then I also competed in device configuration and troubleshooting. And it was just a multiple choice test over basic computer troubleshooting. And I got fourth place in that.
And Gavin, what grade are you in?
Oh, sophomore.
Sophomore. You're, are you, you're gonna be a sophomore?
No, I'm gonna be.
You're a junior. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Robertson, and I competed in your animation team where we just developed a animation using software.
And what grade are you going to be in?
Junior.
You're a junior. Thank you.
Uh, hi, I'm Emily Hopkins, and me and Carson, um, we competed in a team together for a video production team. Um, we made a video about, um, Mrs. Osmeir's farm over here. And, um, um, we got ninth.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, ninth in the nation.
And you both are seniors.
Uh, yes.
And what are your plans after high school?
Um, I'm going to Bloomington for economics.
Uh, and I'm gonna go to Taylor University for.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Uh, hi, my name's Fred Mendon Hall. Uh, I'm a senior. I just graduated, uh, from Mission Sunday. I'm going to Butler University to study computer science and media production. My BPA event was SQL database. Uh, it's a test that I'll talk about a whole lot. It puts people asleep pretty quick. But, um, yeah, all of you guys have heard me talk about BPA continuously. That's probably to the point where I talk about it a little too much, but it's a great program. A lot of these guys, most of them are brand new to the program. All of these guys went to Nationals. It's, uh, growing pretty fast, so thank you.
Um, I also competed with my sister Lucy. I was on the same team, so the user experience design team. I'm a freshman, so I was with, I had the two seniors, but, um, I had a lot of fun. And, yeah, creating like our website and our design for our business. It's really cool. We can be a lot of business skills.
So are you gonna try more projects next year? Is it?
Yeah, I think so. I have an individual event married to, but I'll probably try it new. Good group.
And are you trying to recruit more friends? I mean, it seems like we have a lot of seniors moving on.
Yeah, definitely. I'm recruiting all the freshmen.
Good. Good. Owen?
Uh, Owen Peters. I went to Nationals to compete for computer modeling and fundamental sort of web design.
And what grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
And where are you going after school?
I'm going to Miami University to study capital engineering.
And what place did you get at Nationals?
I got thirtieth and fundamental website and first in the nation for computer model.
Pretty exciting. And don't you have a younger sibling that's gonna be coming up to high school soon?
Uh, yeah, my little brother Miles is about to be a freshman.
So do you think he's gonna do BPA as well? Or you'll hand decide.
How much he likes.
Hello, everyone. I'm Yubraj Fajapati, and I competed in two events at Nationals. I competed in computer animation team with, I'm a senior, and we placed twelfth in our section. And I also competed in medical coding where I handled like the billing and, uh, healthcare aspect of, uh, medicine, and in that I placed first place.
And what gender do you want?
A junior going into senior year.
Right. And what kind of events do you expect to do next year as a senior?
As a senior, uh, knowing that I did really well in medical coding, I plan on continuing that. And I plan on branching out into some network technology events. That's my plans.
Logan?
He brought his place first in Missouri, by the way.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, he, he also got first place national champion. Pretty exciting.
Hi, my name is Logan Priest. I was a senior this year, but I'll be graduating on Sunday. I participated in the podcast production team, and it was really fun going to Nationals this year because we actually got to interview a couple of people down there for our podcast. Um, we unfortunately did not make finals, but we gave it our best shot.
What are your plans after high school?
I will be going to IU Bloomington next year to study finance and data analytics. And I'm not sure what career I'll end up in, but I'm thinking maybe consulting or something like that.
Hi, my name is Braden Haller. I'm a junior going to my senior year at Richmond High School, and I also competed in the podcast production team, my friend Logan over there. We, we had our podcast top talks where hopefully next year I'll be carrying it on my senior year. And we actually got a grant for it at the high school for monies for a podcast room that will be recording and stuff like that. It's pretty exciting. We did get second in state, but unfortunately didn't place in the finals like Logan said. But BPA is a great program. It really helped me come out of my shell. Yeah, I met so many people, all these people, they're awesome. It's, it's just a great learning experience and you get a lot of good connections.
And with some, how many students went to Nationals?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And it's just the largest group you've taken to Nationals? And then how, how did you afford to get all these people to Nationals? What did you do?
Well, we did a variety of fundraising, uh, but the students are responsible for coming up. Lost, and we have quite a few donations this year as well.
And they sold pizzas. And the pizza. I think that's like the top fundraiser. We, so we buy a lot of pizza over here at Central Office. So we're here. Does anyone else have anything else to say? Oh, who else is here from the high school to support you guys? Mr. Amix is here. Thank you for coming, Mr. Amix. Great. So Mr. Amix is the director of. All right. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say SQL database is my language. I build SQL reports all day, every day. Yeah. I work in HR. I will recruit you. But so we can, I will talk sequel with you all day, every day. You could probably show me something.
Would you like to follow?
Without doubt. I'll, I'll just say that, um, what's remarkable is that, um, going into now my fifth year as, as school superintendent, seeing this program go broke year after year. And I recall with Mr. Mendon Hall and, uh, some of the others that are graduating, moving on. I think the goal that you all had and the visionary perspective was to recruit as many as you can and keep the doors open for that many more of your peers to follow through. And I'm so glad that they have done just that. Uh, the pride and, and the, uh, respect as well as the excitement we all have for you, the community has for you. Uh, goes without saying. And to know that, uh, for young Haller and a few others, uh, to know that I was, uh, alongside some of you all's parents, uh, in, in high school. To know that you all are so much more brighter than we were. And so much more intelligent and courageous because what you do, uh, without question is, is remarkable. And so, yes, uh, for you all, I, anybody's, uh, parents, I saw the Howlers with us, but other parents, uh, if we can ask the parents just to stand and just be acknowledged and be great. Again, we can't thank you enough for what it is that you all continue to do. Uh, and Mrs. Shum and the, the program. I know that, uh, again, she is just as excited and joyful as can be. And we will, uh, yeah, move to a, a quick photograph of your own mind.
You're doing this direction, so it's, yeah, how that can happen, is that okay? All right. So squeeze in. Please. Thank you. I just, I don't want that spring to bounce. Don't.
They're like, they're not here to see us.
All right. Get to you. One, two, three. Thank you.
Your number.
We're gonna celebrate two second graders got perfect scores on their IREEPC score. So we, Richmond High School, feeling delighted to give a warm welcome to our two second graders, and that's Stella and Atlas. Can you lift your bar a little? So they're all in the next one. Ninth and the left with four strings. So they kind of have a good. And now they have plans. Look, they all have plans to go.
Yeah, I went to the chess camp.
Oh, you went to chess camp?
Yeah.
Oh, but you know, those hands are better.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So come on up here, you two. So this is Atlas Tucker. He's a second grader at Charles, and Stella Brenz, she is a second grader at Westfield. So, um, I'm just gonna see. Can you tell me, um, Atlas, who did you bring with you tonight?
I brought my mom's.
Who else?
And my dad's.
Okay. Thank you both for coming. And Stella, who did you bring with you?
I brought my mom, my dad, my grandpa, and my teacher.
Your teacher's here. Nice. And who is your teacher?
Ms. Morgan.
Ms. Morgan. Very nice. All right. So again, so tell me, out of all the second graders in the whole city, you two got first scores. What did it feel like when you guys found out about this with all some news?
Happy.
Happy. Yeah.
Surprised.
And surprised. But, I mean, how was it taking the test? Not a big deal?
It was easy.
It was easy.
It was mainly hard.
Okay.
Especially for like the reading parts.
It was.
When I didn't really like the reading part because I don't like reading.
Oh, and you don't like reading and you got a perfect score?
Yeah, two, it was hard.
Oh, my goodness.
Mainly all I did was I, I didn't read the book. I just looked for the parts when it asked you the question.
It sounds like your test skills would be helping you with some testing. Tests with the IREEPC test, too. So, um, so what was your favorite part of second grade at Westfield, Stella?
Um, my teachers.
Your teachers. Nice, nice. And, uh, do you have any siblings? Do you have brothers or sisters? You do? What, how, how many siblings do you have? Two. Oh, they're both here. So you both brothers. All right. All right. And then what about you? Do you have any siblings as, as well? Do you have any brothers or sisters?
Yes. I have five.
Five. My goodness.
A brother, a sister, two stepbrothers, and then a stepsister.
I bet Christmas is fun. Does anyone have any questions for, um, Atlas or Stella?
Um, I only, by the way, I only see my step siblings.
Yeah.
Um, on the weekend.
Yeah, that's how it is, too.
Yeah. My dad.
Yeah. So are you guys excited for third grade next year? No. So you're not going to summer school this summer?
I'm not doing that. I have other plans for the summer. But I. Excited about going to third grade, but I'm also not. Yeah, I don't know why I'm not, and I don't know why I am. I am still, I, you know, for the reason of any of those students.
I completely concur. I understand that as well. Do you guys have any questions or want to say anything additional to the board members? No? You guys have been very brave, and I appreciate your words worth. So, um, every year we celebrate there's, and there's not many of you guys get a perfect score. So again, congratulations to you both. All right. Hello, and, uh, Dr. Wright and my secretary. Ready to get some? Oh, and this newspaper is gonna be your paper, too. One, two, three. One more. Sorry, my mom's, it's her. I got mine. All right. Another, so this is the western, what you can use in the plain daylight. Anything else? All right. Wait, somebody? You're fine. You're good. Thank you.
Congratulations, young lady.
So we have, now we have a public commentary. So moving on to presentation for this evening, uh, Dr. Wright.
President Picking Trustee, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Bridget Hazelbaker rejoin us, uh, at the podium, given the fact there's no public commentary, uh, to present this evening's presentations from Q seven marketing.
Hello again. My name's Bridget Hazelbaker. I'm the director of Student Support Services Communications, and this year was a new year for me is that we had decided to, um, kind of, uh, go in a different direction with marketing for Richmond schools. And so we have been, um, taking in some requests for proposals and just looking at, looking at different, different options that Richmond Community Schools can use to help promote Richmond schools, promote the, the stories of Richmond's, um, Community Schools and the success, um, story that we have. So I have two representatives from Q seven associates. I'd like for them to come up here and, um, they're gonna give a brief, um, summary and, uh, just some, kind of like a roadmap of a direction that they would like for, um, Richmond Community Schools to, um, to follow. Or just as a recommendation, to see what questions you may have about this as well.
You want it? So just please introduce yourself and I'll answer any questions for you.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening. Um, my name is Tiffany Garitano. I am a principal partner, principal partner at Q seven associates. I am joined here today with Scott Allen Tucker. He is another, uh, principal partner and our third partner. Uh, GK Rowe is unable to be here with us today. Uh, but we really appreciate your time and consideration and, um, during your search for an agency for a strategic marketing plan. Just to give you a little background on Q seven, um, we've been in business for over eighteen years. And while we're located in downtown Indianapolis, we actually have built quite an extensive set of relationships, um, here in Wayne County, uh, namely the Richmond Art Museum, former Weston Bank, Richmond Symphony Orchestra, Wayne County Tourism Bureau, and Reed Health, just to name a few. Um, in the past, we actually worked with Richmond Community Schools, uh, to evaluate branding and marketing under a previous leadership. Um, and that was through Reed Health. Uh, so we're looking forward to the possibility of continuing that relationship. As Q seven, we're, our vision is to align creativity with your organization's growth. And we do that three ways. Through customer experience management, experience-based design, and managing transitions. And when we talk about managing transitions, it's often because an organization is at a point in its life cycle where they're evaluating their brand as a whole, um, and probably refining that message to better meet the needs of their end users. To do that, we use a free shipping inquiry. That is one of our knowledge-based services, um, that Q seven uses to gain insight into user behavior, uh, including culture and habits. So if you've ever been involved in a SWOT analysis type, um, program, this is similar. However, it's strengths-based, uh, instead of solely addressing problems. What sets us apart from most agencies is that we use neuroscience and psychology to give us insight into user habits and culture. And that deepens the understanding of that user's emotional journey and allows us to better connect with that organization's mission, vision, and culture. So we rely on psychographics in addition to demographics to fully understand user motivations. You might have heard me mention the consumer journey mapping. Um, this is, our, our services are kind of rooted in experience-based design, and, and that means we focus on a user's entire journey with a brand or organization. And that goes from awareness to advocacy. Um, we use the term user a lot. It's a broad term that we use, um, for an organization like Richmond Community Schools. Users can refer to teachers and staff and administration, or students and families, or even external groups of community members. Um, this illustration just kind of shows how a user progresses along the journey. And our end goal is to create advocates for you. Um, that essentially works us out of our job. So after evaluating data from the free shipping inquiry process, the psychographics, and the journey mapping, we can create a plan to utilize multi-channel marketing effectively. And that, have you all had a chance to review? Are you received our proposal?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So our proposal is essentially building that roadmap, um, for marketing. And, you know, we know that, um, the more channels you, you reach, you can reach your user and strengthen that bond. the more channels you, you reach, you can reach your user and strengthen that bond. Um, we do take, uh, we will, in our recommendations, take it a step further and address omnichannel customer experience, um, by incorporating, um, social media strategy, identifying the appropriate channels, and, uh, defining specific messaging. Um, this part also includes the media buy planning, uh, which includes budget allocation with performance evaluation metrics.
Yep, I will jump in here, and please bear with me because I did not pass the IRE, Cyber Redlow. Um, so we talked about, when we explore the brand identity, uh, for an organization, and we're not just talking about a logo, because there's so many other things that drive your brand. Um, so our proposal kind of does an evaluation assessment of each layer to provide a comprehensive plan. So we will look, uh, starting with the vision, mission, and values. Um, these are rarely put on display in direct terms, but they're really the most crucial. So everything should do come, should come back to support these. And, um, I believe you guys have underwent a strategic plan kind of review this last year, so we can incorporate data that we have found, or you have found from that, and we will then work with your mission, vision, and values, um, as we incorporate, you know, different storytelling, different omnichannel marketing strategies. Uh, because, like I said, it should all come back to support your four mission values, or mission, or, mission, vision, and values. It's a time twister. Um, so this is a great visual that shows you, you know, yes, people see your logo, or, you know, currently it's the We Are Richmond, but really the logo is a tip of the iceberg that's visible, but your culture and identity are your supporting elements. We all, if you think about anything from restaurants to, you know, amusement parks that you go to, everything has an experience, kind of an environment that you go to. So really, that triggers, it all goes back to, like she said, neuroscience and psychology of how your end user experiences your brand, the feeling they get to be a part of it, or they attend, you know, an event at your organization. It should happen because we've all been to places where it has a bad vibe, or, you know, that you don't want to go to. So if you want to put forth marketing efforts and create an environment that people do want to attend, they want to go to school every day, they want their students to relocate to this district to attend a Richmond Community School. So as we get into, and I promise we won't, uh, take up too much time because I don't want to bore people, but, uh, as we get into marketing elements and the brand character, and the language it's used, um, it's kind of broken down into three parts. So, uh, looking at the brand character, language and the words you use, uh, you know, Disney has become synonymous with words like dreams, creativity, magic, fantasy. Uh, so we try to do that with each organization that we've worked with to find the words that people can associate with Richmond Community Schools when they talk about it. Um, hopefully, in the consumer journey, the advocacy when people are word of mouth, these are the words that they use to describe your organization. Um, the next part of brand and character is the voice. The voice, uh, the tone and how you say the words to make up your brand language, like with Nike, you know, it's always a, a just do it, a very inspirational kind of, you know, put forth the effort, put forth the hard work. And then finally, when we get into storytelling, uh, it's a crucial element of your brand character because we know it can increase value by over twenty-seven hundred percent. This is kind of a fun story that we like to tell in, uh, presentations sometimes. Many years ago, there was a woman that had a, an old car that she wanted to sell, and I think it was something like a, you know, a ninety-four Honda Civic. Uh, and it, you know, had like, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, you know, the door didn't shut quite right, it had rust, you know, it, it was a worn down car. Uh, she wasn't getting any interest, and her boyfriend at the time happened to work in video production, so as just a fun thing, he put forth this, like, like a fancy car commercial, like it's a BMW, and, you know, and they made the, the rust on the car, and the, you know, the squeaky wheel, they made that like it was very elegant and everything, and it was a fun video. Um, and it got traction, it online, it was shared and reshared, and the, it was listed as an eBay auto auction, um, and it actually got up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Before they shut it down, because I thought it was a scam.
Yeah, because obviously you've got to pay a hundred and fifty thousand for a ninety-four Honda Civic. But it just shows the power of, you know, storytelling and, and being a part of something that people want to share. And that ties back to your brand, and, you know, this, people want to share your social media post, or, you know, newsletters, or, or whatever we're talking about. Our experience and expertise, uh, we have a wealth of experience in, in branding, marketing, strategic engagement. And I know Tiffany talked in some of these before. Um, some of the places that we've worked with, Reed Health, um, they put forth an initiative a few years ago, uh, as part of their doctor of improvement, to, uh, put forth money to hire us to work on some of the branding and imaging for area schools. Um, because they wanted, you know, felt like it's one of the biggest decisions that doctors, nurses, other executives have when they move here, since they have families, they want to make sure that the schools look good, the families are comfortable moving here. So we've worked with them, uh, you know, to update logos and websites and some of the tangible visual pieces. And then we, um,
So that was just the list of the schools.
Um, Rolls Royce Aero Engine Controls, their division at Rolls Royce, um, is engineering. And we worked with them, uh, for recruitment efforts of college students, trying to get them to, because they were having a hard time recruiting people to come out of college to come work for them. So we've worked with them with collateral and, and talking points and strategies to help recruitment increase.
And they were looking for creative thinkers. They, they wanted, uh, employees that were not, um, had previous notions of, of what a workplace setting was like. And so, um, we did some non-traditional print pieces that were a little out there for them, but it, it worked to definitely pull in that creative thinker mind.
And then for our proposal, we'll make sure, uh, everybody has sent a copy of that. Yes, they actually have a copy of it now.
Oh, they do. I was going to share, I missed focus earlier. I have a copy of your presentation. We understood there were some copyright pieces with the presentation.
Yeah.
They now have access to the proposal that I understood, uh, they just received as well. They do have the proposal to your board.
Yes, okay, good. Um, so, and basically just to, you can review that at your, your own leisure, but, you know, in a summary, um, because when the proposal, the RFP came out, you know, I think it was kind of a general broad term of looking for a marketing firm to help elevate RCS and, you know, encourage them to increase enrollment and, you know, strengthen your marketing campaigns. Um, so this is kind of a roadmap, like Tiffany said earlier, of proposals, of items, for us to collect data, really do a deep dive into the organization, find your strengths, uh, work on, you know, your storytelling, your brand character, your vision, mission, uh, values. Um, and really it's kind of a roadmap of, you know, different social media strategies, um, assessment of current, current pieces, your current website, your current social media, um, and just kind of put forth recommendations for, you know, new plans, or what can you work with existing plans, um, and hopefully, you know, help increase enrollment and, uh, strengthen your brand positioning. Uh, there are, you know, some areas that we need to tweak or, you know, revise based on new needs. Uh, we can certainly do that, but this is kind of a general roadmap.
One of my favorite analogies is, you know, somebody going into a hardware store, and they ask for a drill bit. And they might not need a drill bit. What they do need is a hole. And so this process, um, that we've outlined, using our knowledge-based services of appreciative inquiry and psychographics, and, um, that gives us a better idea of how do we drill that hole.
So I think that's, um, the main.
Yes, that, that was our presentation. We wanted to be sensitive to time.
Um, but, well, I wanted to open up for questions, if any of you have questions.
And again, we sincerely appreciate you all's patience, as this is the first meeting that we've been, um, uh, forwarding with the picture-in-picture.
Yeah.
Of our guests that are, I'm sorry, our members and others are, uh, virtually attending. Uh, so we definitely appreciate you all's presence, I'm sorry, patience. Um, the presentation, um, was there, but our board now, uh, as opposed to, I'm sure that they, uh, will want to scour through, but general questions, we also know that, um, Mr. Hazelbaker, our technology specialist, will, uh, join the conversation in due time, but one question that you all don't mind, that I might leave with, uh, knowing that, uh, we've worked with you all in the past, now even prior to my arrival. Um, and I know that you all, Q7 has a footprint in our county with our fellow corporations, uh, with their website designs and the other. Uh, but I also know across the parking lot, you all have a major, uh, partnership with the Richmond Art Museum. And with what you all have done with Ram in the past, I'm curious to know, uh, what approach have you all taken because of the services you provided them, and then the magnets, and the important graphics, and the design, the look, the appeal, the flash. What are some of the things that toe into that partnership or other partnerships? Do you all look for when trying to highlight an organization or corporation?
So for the art museum at least, it was very interesting because they do have, um, kind of specific user groups. Um, and so when we look at specific user groups, we put that list of, we define that list of, okay, so what are your goals? What do you specifically want to accomplish with a certain group? And then we go from there, and it's, it's, it, it, we do let, um, the psychology of those groups kind of drive, um, how we approach it. Um, when it's a younger group, we can obviously be a little more whimsical, uh, so to say, but, um, we also have to be very sensitive that when we're, um, putting certain publications out, that we don't use too small print, um, because of the user groups. And so, um, being able to shift like that, I think, uh, has allowed us to try many different things.
And also keeping things that are interesting to an average person, because, you know, we all know from watching television or scrolling on social media, you're over-innated with data and images and ads. So, you know, it's usually something that's funny or emotionally connects to you, that you'll stop and like, oh, watch that or forward it on. Otherwise, I mean, compare, you know, I can say that, but it's like, uh, you know, whether it's an insurance company, a bank, I mean, at the end of the day, most of us aren't that passionate about a bank ad, but if it's something funny, you know, then we might share, or we might think, oh, that makes me want to support that bank because of their values. Um, so we try to find that element, too, of what makes this organization stand out? What are the strengths? What is something that's going to be either entertaining, or interesting, or emotionally connected to the end user? And I think for a school, uh, emotion is going to be the, the big thing of, you know, when you're talking about young people's, you know, future and getting a good education and their aspirations, there's so much there to really focus on, um, and just listening to the, the students.
I was just going to say, they're not even my kids, and my heart, my mom's heart is like smelling with crying, like, it's so amazing.
And amazing what opportunities there are now compared to even when I was in school, which, I mean, was only a couple of years ago. But, you know, just like a podcast, uh, you know, having that, I mean, that's just so impressive. So I think there are a lot of things that you really can connect with, uh, through a school's organization.
Um, I have a question. Well, first, I have recently found myself in that small print user group, so I appreciate that thought. Um, but I was going to ask, how do you all handle, so, you know, we might have goals, and we think we know where we want it to go. How do you handle when you see, you know, the data or the trends not really lining up? Um, do you, is that something that you're able and willing to kind of stand up and say, you know, we know you guys really want to go this route, but we've, because I, I'm not saying that is us.
Yeah, well, we want to be responsible with your money. Like, we don't want to lead you down a rabbit hole that isn't going to be beneficial.
Yeah, so we always feel, you know, you hire us for our expertise and experience, so that's what we give you, and, you know, these are the recommendations, and these are the reasons why. Um, so sometimes if there is, you know, these were our goals, or these were our ones, and the, you know, we've, we're not afraid to approach it and say, you know, X, Y, Z, maybe you should consider, you know, changing that. Um, and, you know, because we want to do our due diligence, so, you know, that's what you hire us for. And, you know, we're always going to be honest and, and get that. And, you know, and there are times, too, that we may have a particular recommendation, but if there's something else that's brought up that makes sense, you know, we can pivot and, and work with that as well. Um, there just has to be purpose, um, behind, I think, whatever decision, you know, an organization makes.
I think it's a little bit unfortunate, we, we didn't see the, we don't know exactly what the request looked like. I mean, we've been talking about marketing for some time, and, but not knowing, and then looking at your deliverables. I guess that's the closest thing to the RFP that there is. But they're, they're somewhat general, um, other than the increased student enrollment and retention piece. Um, I guess, I, I, I guess they're competing also some, I mean, if our goal is to increase student enrollment and retention, and that's the, the goal, then promoting and strengthening and establishing, while pieces of that kind of seem like they might not be, I mean, it seems like we need a very clearly defined goal before we partake in a, a program.
Yeah.
And so I, I guess I'd like to see that flushed out a little bit, either by administration or the combination, because I'm not really sure, other than just a, a feel-good, what exactly, you know, the, the deliverable is. But with that, I'm also concerned, I mean, like, we're on the Ram mailer list, we get the mailers. I don't know if that's an effective way for schools to recruit and retain. Have, what experience do you have working with other corporations, other than the Wayne County Initiative with Reed Hospital? I mean, have you done other work in a recruitment and retention standpoint with, uh, Carmel, or Evansville, or anyone in the state?
No, we have not, but the only public schools have been in central Indiana here, so Randolph and Wayne and Bay County. Um, but, and, you know, you, you are correct, this, the RFP was a little general, and this is kind of a general roadmap of not going in yet, because we're not the place to say, you know what, you definitely need mailers, and you need a billboard, and you need, you know, like, this is a discovery of gathering the data and getting feedback, like you just said, of, you know, what are our goals and where do we need to go, and what, what are you doing now that is working, and what should you be doing to get to where you're going? So this definitely can be refined a little more. Um, we just wanted to keep kind of a general.
I mean, I, I guess I also, and again, not really being involved in the request, and, and not that, I mean, I'm, but I, I think internally, and maybe this is where a consultant could help us more, is, is to differentiate ourselves. I mean, I think we've traditionally, all government units, but I think us in particular have lacked in, like, the customer service, if you will. So like, school choice, I think that's something we could easily offer, and, and we kind of do it sort of if there's room. But, you know, a work, a, a company could come in and say, by offering school choice at the elementary level, making it a true, a value-added, if you will, then I think those type things, um, I know sometimes we have convenience fees we charge, maybe that's, you know, I think if we drilled down and identified how we interact with our families, our students, and community, I think there might be some opportunity there. I don't know if that's something you guys can do. I mean, that's not really marketing, it's more of a, but it, you know, those two kind of seem to interrelate, but I think that's something that we could really benefit from as a corporation.
Yeah, and that's part of the, kind of the appreciative inquiry process that we go through.
I was going to say, we need you all the appreciative inquiry process.
Yeah, of getting different viewpoints. Um, so when we get a, you know, group together, we don't want all, you know, administrators, we want maybe one administrator, but we also need a teacher, we need a student, we need a parent, we need a, you know, because you need different viewpoints of how this organization has touchpoints throughout the community, and, and like you said, every place is a little bit different. And like you said, every place is a little bit different or things could be touched on. So, you know, that definitely is all part of the appreciative inquiry process.
And we had like the two national champions today, obviously that's a, a huge strength positive, strong KPA program. And so finding that balance, but also I think there's just, I think there, you know, we're not, we don't have a, a marketing department. We have, you know, Bridget does an excellent job, but there are areas where I think we're just not geared to, to excel at. And that's where I think he brings someone in that maybe can, can have more than, I mean, I, I think a school would differ from a corporation selling a product or a service.
Yeah.
In many ways. And, I mean, it'd be interesting to see where that leads possibly, but.
Yeah, and we always say, you know, no one knows your business more than you do. You know, we know marketing, you know your school, or the bank knows the bank, or, you know. So we merge those two together to create the best outcome. So we're not going to ever claim to be experts on education. That's for the teachers and administrators and the school board. But we can merge the principles of marketing and experience design and neuroscience to, you know, fuse those together. I have a lot of great points.
I have a question.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for coming in, I appreciate, and the overview really helps my mind kind of wrap around some.
And it's a lot in the short.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate just being able to do it here and, you know. I really like the consumer journey mapping, because I think that we are interested in, you know, getting new students to come, but also improving our communication with our teachers, with, you know, with our parents, with our students, and all of those pieces. So am I understanding, just from scrolling through the proposal, and it is very vague, like I looked through, I'm still unsure what we end up with at the end. But are you?
Oh, it's a, it's basically a timeline, a calendar.
Okay.
That says, in May, these are items that you should be doing, whether it's a billboard or a postcard, that's yet to be.
You give us the roadmap.
But, but yes, it'll be a schedule.
And then.
A marketing plan.
You give us the plan and then we carry out that plan based on all of the data that you gather and knowing what our goals are. Okay, that's what I needed to understand. Thank you.
No. And that question, that plan, carrying out the implementation of the plan is in concert with our communications office, with our technology office, which should get one of those days, we'll wrap them up here shortly. And you all will help continue to facilitate, provide guidance.
Right.
During such the journey of the timeline of the plan.
Um, I have one more. I see kind of your base proposal price and then kind of other terms and conditions. And, and there may be some added on production costs or added on, and roughly, I mean, a percent, how much, does, does that go up from your base price and, on average, I guess?
Well, that is.
I know it's going to depend on us, but I mean, is it thousands or is it just, it just depends?
That could, you know, because we're looking at the planning and strategic part of it. So a lot of the elements then will be that the school could do itself.
Right.
Or, you know, social media posting itself, but yeah, anything if it comes down the line, whether it would be like a billboard, you know, then obviously there are costs associated with, you know, whatever the billboard company charges and that sort of thing. So that, that's hard to answer because it really would depend on what, what elements that, you know, and that also.
What drove it?
We work kind of too with what budget, you know, what do you have a marketing budget for? So then we can kind of suggest ideas that fit within that budget that you would normally be doing or could normally be doing on a school. So nothing, you know, we're not going to come back and say, you know, propose a hundred thousand dollar commercial or anything like that. So, you know, something that is feasible and fits within the confines of, of what your budget would allow.
And then the, the proposal or the plan that you end up with, is it a one-year plan, a five-year plan, a 10-year? I mean, are you, what is it normally, I mean, I know you can't predict what marketing needs to happen and, but is it, what, I guess, what's the timeline of the plan?
I mean, as far as the calendar goes, I guess it would be, you're going to have certain things that occur every year. Graduation is going to happen every year. Voice state is going to happen every year. Kindergarten roundup is going to happen every year. So I think there are those groups of like staples that aren't going to change.
Well, I think her, her question is our involvement.
Oh.
Right.
Well, kind of both. I mean, I guess if you give us this, this roadmap of how we move forward, is that moving forward right now for the next year?
Yeah, I think our.
Here's a five-year plan of wherever, you know.
I think our involvement would be a few months to, you know, get the data and put together a, a roadmap of how to do that and then put forth like, this is your first year's marketing thing, and then give you the tools that moving forward, that's something that Bridget or collectively, you know, that you can do on your own.
Okay.
Like she said at the beginning, we basically work ourselves out of a job. So trying to give you guys the, the education and the tools to allow me to do that yourself.
Thank you.
I think this, if you all mind, if I transition to Mr. Hazelbaker, I know that Mr. Alex Hazelbaker, Director of Technology, I wanted just to simply join you all because previously he and Mrs. Hazelbaker, Bridget Hazelbaker of No Relation, had presented to our board about this very topic, marketing as well as the, the internet and our online website and footprint. So Mr. Hazelbaker and Mrs. Hazelbaker.
So absolutely. Good evening, Dr. Wright, Florida trustees. I really loved what Q seven had to share. They hit on a lot of powerful words when we begin to describe marketing communications, that being branding, emotional connection and storytelling. And as we begin to explore the modernization of Richmond Community School District Marketing Plan and potential onboarding partnerships with a local marketing firm, it's recommended by the Department of Technology to begin examining the ideology and the discussion of launching a redesigned corporate website alongside these changes made to any district marketing or corporate branding. During March, during our March work session, if you can recall, Ms. Bridget Hazelbaker and myself spoke on the importance of ensuring that district communications were not only professional, but transparent and effective in their chosen media. Our particular media includes that which serves as our digital footprint, the front door to our corporation. The, our enrichment website serves as our central hub for public facing information while providing private resource links for faculty, staff and students. However, this chosen media can serve that much more effectively for our community when prioritized to serve an ever-growing virtual audience. Today's digital world demands a more modern approach to the delivery of district communications and information, leveraging multiple media types, types that draw immediate attention to the district's digital communications, those which include article postings, slideshows, media, social media integrations, corporate branded videos, are some of these media types the district can leverage through a modernized platform. As your Director of Communications and Technology, we would love to begin diving into the discussions of getting the We Are Richmond website a modern overhaul, creating a digital platform that is designed at its core to meet the expectation of today's digital world. The We Are Richmond website will serve as the first impression for well over 94% of its visitors. These first impressions can last a lifetime and through the establishment of a modern marketing plan on corporate website, Richmond Community Schools both provide community members that much more with effective communication, both professionally and transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelbaker. And again, the, and we have remarkable phenomenon, I think you definitely aged your second grade. But nevertheless, the rationale behind bringing Q seven into engaging dialogue and reintroducing us with the conversations that we previously had with the board is in lieu of our administrative retreat that's occurring next Tuesday. I know that coming out of our strategic planning process phase one, communication, marketing was a constant thing found throughout. And so as we approached the administrative retreat next week, we felt that having Q seven come in and provide the insight, just reiterating, briefly rehashing what's already been presented, may give you all opportunity to have some dialogue here publicly in this business meeting, that we can then carry on next Tuesday into the administrative retreat. And so.
Any other additional questions?
So you have to remind me, so, I mean, I guess I'll just cut to the chase, are you wanting more money for a website? Alex, is that?
Not necessarily more money, but what I'd like to be able to do, and we touched on it very briefly during our March work session, was that our current partner that we utilize for our website branding is very lacking in those modernizations that we need to provide as a district to be able to effectively communicate anything digitally to our community or those prospective members that may be coming to our community. And we touched a lot on the fact that our desire is to increase enrollment. And when we leverage those modern media types, that's how we begin to do that corporate branded, that emotional connection, that storytelling is utilizing those types of media. And one of those effectively is our corporate website. You know, as you get online nowadays, the first thing I do if I want to learn more about a restaurant, for instance, in this example, is, you know, going to Google. And I'm going to search up their website, I'm going to look for views and what people have to say about that particular brand before I make a decision of whether or not I'm going to spend my dollar there or not. Same thing with a school district, visit the website, see what they have to offer, bearing that from whether it's athletics or if it's music and productions or it's unique courses that may be offered. We have an amazing career center over here along with performing arts center on top of our athletic department that we have to offer. We have a lot of unique opportunities here in Richmond. But how are we marketing those to individuals who may choose to come to Richmond? Are we putting that at the forefront of our initial doorstep? How are we communicating those and showing folks the amazing things we do here at Richmond? But to get to the chase of your point about the money part is, we would like to move from our current website producer.
I mean, to your point, I mean, when I look at our website, it looks as expected. I mean, that's what I would expect a, a school website to, to look, and maybe that's fine, maybe that's not, I don't know. I think, I think what you're getting, well, I'll just say, I think what, what I harped on different times over my career has been, I mean, we generate all this original content every day and we have yet to utilize it in any effective manner. Although if you're going to live and die by that, you're going to live and die by it. So, I mean, you can't, I mean, because you can't without, I mean, the guardrails, it, it's tough. Because if you're putting out content that we're creating originally, which is what we have to offer, I mean, I, I think that's what you're getting at, sort of. You know, things can go south without really good guardrails. But I, I, yeah, we'll just have to venture, I mean, like I say, the website, just visually as is, I think, looks very as expected.
It's just, it's not user-friendly, just many of our staff are, are office staff.
I got, I guess.
But it's such a, I mean, I don't know that, and you look at where you're trying to do it. It's not like it's ever going to be, you know, until we get pure AI where you just speak. But I mean, I've argued for an app for the, since, for years, that we just.
And that always costs additional. So creating an app, certainly, it's one of those things that I could say from you, for you, for one of the partners that we've worked at with both Ed Leo and a competing competitive vendor, that $5,000 to create an application. So that's a yearly cost of $5,000 to create an application where if we can spend, say, $1,000 to $2,000 more per year to move to a platform that allows us to leverage social media, utilize Parent Square integrations directly in the website, we're creating that central hub for communications for our district then. Whereas in our current status with Ed Leo, if I need to go and find anything for Parent Square or for social media postings, I need to go to an external website where we can house, house all of that in one place.
It's a locked up.
I mean, I guess I would, I would say, for the, as a board member, I'd say, when you find exceptional examples, forward them to us so we can look at them.
Absolutely, and those are discussions we would love to have more in depth with, where we can prepare those examples for you and we can begin to have those work session-based discussions, whether it's in this forum or if it's in, unfortunately, dare I say, a working group style of committee, then so to begin looking at those ideas.
While not, not to minimize the work, this isn't one you need to reinvent the wheel on. I mean, there's what, 300 districts in Indiana, there's thousands across the country, I mean, there's people doing it well. So just.
Well, I think too, the website is fitting to the fold, right? It's a marketing tool, but as a current parent, it is really hard to navigate. Like, I.
Thank you.
You know, I try to go on as a parent and I'm, or student and it, I mean, yeah, we did have a working session because I just be like.
I think the working session.
Right, and then you're digging in over here, but then I gotta go back out and go over to Charles and then. So there's just a lot of functionality, which I would assume a new platform would help the seamless transition. So it's like, step one is, let's help our parents and students and staffs, because I think the additional marketing piece of that is going to be byproduct. But yeah, just help, help us now.
Somebody's got to be doing it well right now.
But I think it's probably limitations on, on pages, right? Like visually is one thing, but take a step, search anything, I guess, you know. I try to search all the time, there's so much archive too, it's, it's not relevant.
And I hope to search each year this weekend.
Yeah.
And then to add too, I believe, and again, Mr. and Mr. Hazelbaker, and Mr. Hazelbaker can both, we attest, the website has, has improved over the course of time compared to where it was. But I think that's what Mr. Hazelbaker was allowing to some of those limitations of the current platform. And Mr. Hazelbaker, correct me if I'm wrong, but I learned during the last work session we had, the policy work session, that the budget regarding marketing is, is a global decision per se. That again, next to the, we can, we can, and look at, because to Mr. Weber's point, there are other corporations that, and, and districts that quite frankly have invested heavily into marketing and especially in some of the more metropolitan areas, when it comes down to competition, marketing is the, the key to it all. And so there's no other, oh, yeah.
I do think Member Stevens has a question. If you want to unmute.
We have them back.
Yeah. Can you hear us here? Do you have a question?
Yes, I can hear you now. Both, both Ron and I have lost audio. But I, I'm fair enough.
Okay, did you have a question or anything or just some audio?
No.
Okay.
Just, you're solid, thank you.
And turning across, you just do yours as well, I believe, sir, I thought I saw your thumbs up, is that right? Okay, great, great.
All right, there's no other questions, thank you all. Thanks so much.
Moving on to consent items. So since we have some virtual participation today from another board member, we will be doing all of our voting by roll call today. Secretary Terry Stoltz will be calling roll, and we will be accounting for everyone. So let's try this out. So moving to consent, items 5.01 through 5.08. I still need a motion.
Except consent items 5.08 through, or it's 5.01 through 5.08.
Second.
There was a motion by Weber and a second by Member Aloriaga. Senator Stoltz.
It would be helpful, I think someone to read the heading.
Read the heading of each consent items, is that what I hear you saying, a pretty close, read the headings of each consent item.
Okay, absolutely. And so our consent items are 5.01, approval of minutes, 5.02, human resource and addendum, 5.03, accounts payable, 5.04, monthly financial report, 5.05, transfers, 5.06, grants, 5.07, policy 0164, notice of meetings, technical correction, 5.08, policy 172, legal counsel, technical correction. So we had a motion by Member Weber and a second by Member Aloriaga. All right, I'll take the roll. Brunton.
Hi.
Aloriago.
Hi.
Pickering.
Hi.
Stevens.
He's muted.
He's turned. Stevens.
Hi.
Stoltz, I. Weber.
Hi.
All right, that's a six zero. Great. Great. Um, moving on to action items. Item six point oh one, donations.
I move to accept the donations in item six point oh one.
Second. That was a motion by Member Stoltz and a second by Member Brunton. I'll take the roll. Brunton.
Aye.
Aloriago.
Aye.
Pickering.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stoltz, aye. Weber.
Aye.
All right. Go pass six to zero. And item six point oh two, summer of learning conference speaker contracts.
I move to accept the item six point oh two, summer of learning conference speaker contracts.
Second.
So a motion by Member Stoltz and a second by Member Aloriaga. Do we have any questions or comments?
I guess I do have a comment, I I think it's great that we've been, is this the twelfth year that we've hosted, is that right? Yeah, it's great that we're able to offer that and that it's been such a success and go to him.
It continues to grow. It continues to grow, and there are that many more keynote speakers that are anxious and excited to get on the days to speak and present, and so. It's something that here in Eastern, in the app, in the app, continues to be, we'll start to talk about.
Actually, to go to a couple of this, Mr. Weber had said it's a great experience to go, so I'm excited. Go ahead, we can call please. Secretary Terry. Brunton.
Hi.
Aloriago.
Aye.
Pickering.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stoltz, aye. Weber.
Aye.
Passes six to zero. And moving on to item seven, policy review updates. First on the list is item seven point oh one, which is policy eighty four fifty five. Coach training references and IHS double A reporting first reading.
I move to move, seven point oh one, policy eighty four fifty five, coach training references and IHS double A reporting to second reading.
Second.
So motion by Member Stoltz and a second by Member Weber. Any questions or comments? Uh, please call the roll. Brunton.
Hi.
Aloriago.
Aye.
Pickering.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stoltz, aye. Weber.
Aye.
Go pass a six to zero. Um, up next, seven point oh two, which is policy zero one six five, board meetings first reading.
I move to move, uh, item seven point oh two, policy zero one six five, board meetings, first reading, second reading.
Second.
So motion by Member Weber, a second by Member Aloriaga, any questions or comments?
Um, mission before, just for the public, you might, we have policy meetings, but there, but once a month. That these policies are reviewed thoroughly in a public format, so. There's a great deal of time that goes into reviewing all these, just in case we're buzzing through them.
Yes.
Also, I appreciate the work that Ron did in revising a section under emergency meetings. Thought like that helped kind of focus on what we were wanting to do there.
Do we have a date for the next policy review?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're out a couple, but.
Okay.
All right.
Is that something?
We thought should we split you or?
You just couldn't do it without you.
Let's do it for you, Krista. Yes, we can do that now.
Okay. So the last one was the nineteenth of May, so sixteen. Is a possibility, is Stacy here, Stacy?
Just to remind, we only have one board meeting here.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had May twentieth is our last one, so maybe June, June seventeenth, and we stick to the Tuesday. Um, how does that work for everyone, Stacy, June? Thank you. Is that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll keep the meeting time at ten, ten to eleven thirty is our usual vote time. Okay.
Um, please call the roll. Brunton.
Aye.
Aloriago.
Aye.
Pickering.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stoltz, aye. Weber.
Aye.
So passes six to zero. Um, that should already be another discussion. Um, moving to other discussion, um. President's update, so a couple things I just wanted to touch on. Obviously, remote participation. We're getting our act together, finally. So we briefly talked about it, I know Member Stoltz joined remotely last week and didn't get to vote. We kind of tried to work on a plan, but I just wanted to bring that up, so we're all on the same page. Uh, I think my thoughts were just if you're going to be out and you want to join the meeting virtually and vote. It's important, email the whole board, I think, and Mr. Hazelbaker. Just so it can all get on, thrown on our calendar. I did have the Google Meet put on the calendar. Um, which helps me remember I actually joined the meeting this time, so I can, you know, sort of monitor and see what's going on. You know, last meeting, your smiley face was.
Yeah.
Cute, which we don't, we don't want that. I'm on spotlight, but I think this format definitely works, and then if you, we would all get the meeting if you all want to join. And then turn your cameras on too, to have a little more face to face if we have more conversation with whoever's virtual. I think that's helpful too, especially when you're the one sitting on that side, so. And just make sure that we're all communicating. I think there's a level, if you want to join a meeting, but you don't want to vote. My thought is, that's fine too, it's just making sure we're communicating. If we are, and then we know ahead of time if there's something on the agenda that you cannot vote on, which there's still a few things, then. Everyone's aware, we can make note of that, that vote wouldn't. You wouldn't vote for that, whatever it is. Do you all have any? Additional feedback? Okay. I feel like this is pretty simple, so, but we are all responsible if we are going to be out to communicate. To communicate with the entire board.
With the entire board, yeah.
Just so, like I said, if I forget, someone's like, hey, Kim, if, you know, that way.
I think that's like an extra measure of, I mean, because I had communicated to Kim and to Alex and had gotten the link, you know, but. If there's some, you know, because then everybody can say, hey, Keno, don't be, because she's running a meeting and, you know, so it's kind of like, hey, remember this is happening.
And to make sure, I think the additional level is us all getting the link, or at least me, to make sure that I'm logged in and. You know, I saw Aaron raising his virtual hands, which was good. Because I know it is hard on that side, you don't want to just shout out in the meeting, but. And then, of course, every virtual meeting, we have to do a little vote, so. Um. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up, we kind of briefly touched on this with the lovely facility working group. Or a lovely working groups. I did sort of touch base with Member Cross about the pack and how many school board members, and I just wanted to get your thoughts. Attorney Cross's feedback was, you know, to stay out of trouble, we could have one board, one board member sort of as a point person. Which I thought that might be good, sort of, like Member Brunton is our point person for policy. So that if we have questions that. Board member can sort of take the lead with, whether that's with Mr. McCurdy, or Scalph, or, you know. Mr. Walton, to sort of help guide, and we're not all. Trying to figure out what's going on, and then that person sort of takes on the role. If we have questions, then we know it's one point person, not that we can't all. We will, but, so I just wanted to bring that up, not that we're necessarily forming anything. Right now, but I think with the continued bond projects. What we are looking to do, I think that helps streamline communication. As well, so, does anyone have any feedback? Um, I know we've done different things in the past. We can still have working session, work sessions, like the policy session. But I was looking to just sort of have someone sort of. Be able to communicate on our behalf, or we get to ask them the questions and they get to go follow the trajectory. So, I will just open that up if you guys have any thoughts on that.
I guess I'm a little torn on it, because I feel like this is such a big project, it almost to me feels like it should be a work session if we need to, but I do understand the point of it. Have a point person or a working group.
I think it could still be. Yes. You think it could still be a work session?
Yes. Thinking of it, sort of how you will just communicate with Stacy, like, when's the next meeting?
So that person kind of coordinates that.
Oh, yeah.
Some of those logistics of kind of getting it working together.
Like here's sort of the questions, are we not getting the answers? And then whether we still do a working session in conjunction with a board meeting, we do it separate. With the policy, I think there's a lot of things that float around that. If we have one person, two people. Kind of like, hey, you know, Nicole is taking the lead on this, I can filter some things from her. But that's just, yeah, that was my, I feel like it's just gonna get busier and crazier with the projects, so.
I think the policy, I mean, I think. Policy meeting, why, I think those are effective, that's a pretty high time utilization meeting, not only for board members, but also for staff. I think in some ways we'll need to do it, but I think it's also important, I mean, once a month, I think is reasonable, I think if we went to every other week, that would be. Just, this is a big time draw, I think facilities, I mean, there's more going on than there's ever been before. And. Back in the day, we used to have a, a working group where we met at least monthly, and I thought that was very effective. And so I think, I think it would be. I think the board's goal is always to be kind of. At least involved in the decision making. That, that, or let me rephrase, that the board needs to not let administration be too far out ahead of the board. And I think by, by having physical meetings, that helps, because, because it's the surprises that are always. Got us the most angst, I guess, and so. By having, uh, board members. I mean, it's, do it right, it's be a fairly, I mean, it's because that piece seems to be missing now. I mean, we have operations, we have facilities, and they kind of. What we get isn't exactly, and we have Mr. McCurdy. And so, I don't know exactly what the funnel would look like, but I think it makes sense to add some sort of value added content there.
Well, I think it's, it's not just for us too, I think, having some sort of directness helps. Add them in too, right, if they might have just a simple question, and we all know, I think it's email tag. That turns into versus, hey, Mr. Weber, I know you guys talked about this, can you clarify? And, you know. It, it might just be a simple answer, or it's a simple like, hey, board, did we all say this, right? It's, so that's where I'm trying to.
Because it's, I mean, I can remember the finance working group, I mean, it was nice to just dig into the finances on a level that. It wasn't quite so. Board meeting-esque, uh, simpler even, if you will, but deeper, I think, you know. Simplified approach, and and not, I'm not knowing exactly what this would look like, I think, anytime the board's shedding more light on things, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, and clearly, I liked the work we heard when we started, but I know Attorney Cross has sort of given some feedback on. How they ever changing. Open door laws affect that, but I find that hybrid is. It's not all having to throw all of our brain power into it at all times, and.
I think, yeah, I mean, the, the combination of the staff and the board, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's just an expensive meeting. For, for really time utilization, more than actual dollars.
So is it something that's really, maybe we. I know we probably need to get together, do. Another work session, just with the feedback we got from Mr. McCurdy, some of those, and then sort of. You know, I think whatever could be born out of that.
It's a retreat.
Yeah, the retreat, retreat, I mean.
What should I have?
Yeah. And whoever wants this task. Go for it.
Mike would do it if he needed to, legally, legislative guy, so. Probably not with you.
You need to put Mike on here, let him play a little bit.
He was probably throwing me a bus.
Right. Uh, okay, so we'll maybe talk about that Tuesday, just next steps for. Facility working group and what, where we need to make decisions or talk through, and then we'll kind of go back. Um, okay, great, um, item eight point oh two, which is the RDC update. This, Member Stoltz.
All right, so we have met four times since I last gave the update. We met on March eighteenth, and on March eighteenth, there was the establishment of the resolution for the Smith Hill Residential Economic Development Area. So, that's hopefully going to be increasing property tax base as well as providing. Single family development in that housing area, so that was kind of, that was about, oops. And then next, on April first, we had a public hearing in order, it was on the Smith Hill Housing EDA, so. So that's kind of about it on that, and then on Tuesday, May twentieth, last week, we had. An update on Sixth Main, Sixth Main, they're calling the former Elder Bearman area, for those who didn't know. So, exciting news there, job trailers are supposed to be placed this week, they're breaking ground on June second, so that is coming up soon. And it looks like it's gonna be a great project and super, lots of, lots of synergy in that whole area right now. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in regards to Revitalize Richmond, we had a Revitalize Richmond update. From the Colonel Collins at Earlum, and he was talking about, he's the Director of Community Relations. He was talking about the Community and College Connections Grant. And one of the things that pertains to us directly is simply that they're looking at a dedicated walking and biking path that goes by McBride. From Earlum to downtown, so if we want to start projecting on how we could be utilizing that and capitalizing on that. I thought that would be interesting to, you know, kind of noodle. And then we also have just some fun things, like they're looking at possibly. Um and then we also have um just some fun things like they're looking at possibly purchasing an electric bus. That looks like a trolley uh to loop around the downtown area um. Perhaps even being free, uh it's kind of like a hop off, hop on type concept, so we'll see where that ends up. Um they're also rebranding the Roseview Transit, um so um not sure. How that would affect our student population necessarily, but um that's something that they're looking into. Um also of note, um they were just talking about the White Water Gorge activity. Activation with um the Test Road Trailhead, the kayak and zip line course um. And uh beautification in general downtown, all of those things um as I see it in relation to. Um our student population is giving some outlets um and some recreational space that hopefully will um allow. Our students to recognize that Richmond is a fun place and there are fun opportunities, so um that was um on the twentieth. And then today we met um as well and looked into um the newest project, which is uh Project Phoenix. And um Project Phoenix um is uh it's five historical buildings. Um that are being, um as of today, everything was passed um to create um. A Tiff District and um a um. Plan for these five dis- or five buildings that are historical that um are going to be utilized for um. Uh redevelopment and housing, so the buildings that we're talking about are the Nolenbergs Building. Uh Oddfellows, the Hiddle Building, uh which the address for that's eight twenty eighth Maine, there's also the Harris Building um. Formerly known as the Cheese Grater, uh some people refer to it, it's still a bank, uh and then there's also the Grassroots Building, which was the tiny one. That was kind of built in the alleyway, um of those five, only one will be um demolished. Uh the grassroots one, which is not historical, as I said, it was a filler building. Um and so that's actually going to be able to open up that um space again. So that um the original windows can be put back into those um adjacent buildings, so. Exciting stuff there, there's um almost uh thirty million dollars invested um in that project. That um should re-bridalize that downtown district, um so they're planning to start with Hiddle and move east. Um it looks like it's gonna be about fifteen months or fifteen months to complete and they're looking at twenty thousand square feet of real estate. That they will be offering, um and um Richmond needs it, we need that, um it will all be at market value. Um rentals, so um hopefully we're attracting, we'll we'll see if it attracts um families. It looks like probably it's they're geared more towards young professionals and empty nesters, um which. Isn't exactly meaning students for us, but you never know, so anyway, yeah, any questions?
I was just gonna say, I sold my commercial building a year or two early, it was right next to Grassroots. Um but there are windows in there, they have a wall that we checked out, anyway. But I'd seen the original drawing, so they put those filler buildings and those were across like that.
Yeah, so it so they're gonna, the the thought is to open that back up, um maybe even like have some cute little lights strong. And make it a little more. Fun, yes.
Um this other question and maybe, you know, with the rebrand of Roseview Transit, I don't know. Miss Scalp knows, is is it just a rebrand, because I always think of the bigger cities, right, where students take. Public transportation to school, um and it would be interesting to sort of. I've never looked up their routes, I don't know, but. If that that could potentially be a good partnership, especially with our older students and uh but. You know, maybe now it's the time to ask.
I mean, if they're looking at using Uber for for students, I mean, like we, yeah.
Yeah, or the trolley, I mean, that would be another good one.
You said it's free.
We don't know for sure if it's going to be free, if they're looking into the possibility of that, so. Oh, free, like the transit, okay. We don't know if it's going to be free. It would be great, um that was the question I posed, I said, is it going to be a free trolley, and they said, we're looking into the possibility, so. We'll, to be determined.
But at least maybe free to students, that might be a. I U V S, but you know, offering partnerships, yeah.
I would just add, and I don't know what the board, but you know, a couple of months ago, we talked about the audio video or the. The audio situation at. And then the the lighting system, I mean, is this something we can go back to the redevelopment corporation? I mean, we have a package at some point of what actually is needed there and can we. I mean, I know they put a ton of money in that, they may not want to put anymore, but it, you know, it's kind of, I mean, all these projects are great, but they're all. For the housing, but new, 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 I'd like to complete something to the level it should be. You know, I mean, we always hear about people talking about parks, just maintain what we have, let's fix what we have. I mean, that would be my argument, you know, we have something really nice, let's just put that final piece on it. And I think redevelopment, I mean, there's, we have what, one point, one quarter million dollars?
One million fifty three thousand.
So it seems like a great use to just just get this. Right where it needs to be, and that has direct impact on our students. And so I'd I'd love to see us kind of continue that path and. I mean, I don't know, I mean, Napoleon would have a better redevelopment than than I would, but I would think that a a pretty good compelling story could be.
Do we know, have we um dug into that, Dr. Wright, to see what the needs are at McGuire?
Yeah, we're still waiting to listen, um because to. For his point, Napoleon was.
And what should be there for Dollar Stamps for Sidel this weekend, so.
We we put AC in and we went over the top with the furniture things, I mean, it's like. Why don't we, I mean, this should be done. I would like to exceed their expectations, would be my goal.
Um moving on to uh page nine point O one, open forum, um just wanted to open the floor if anyone. Thing they want to bring up, questions, comments, concerns, kudos.
Is softball win this weekend?
Just about to say, I don't want to steal Mrs. Hazelbakers Thunder with the bell ringer, but yes, softball did win last night. Uh there at Mount Vernon Exceptional Beat, uh one of our art writers, the Muncie Central. Uh High School Bearcats and uh the young ladies performed in the coaching staff, just. The crap that was there, it was representing the city and the school, it was uh it was fantastic, and we are currently competing as we speak. And I'm not sure if we got a score against Anderson, I believe they're uh their second round opponent this one year. Indians there in Anderson High Schools, I'm looking at the time, I believe they may more than likely be in um. Five, the fourth, fifth, I'm trying to talk baseball. Yes, they they did a tremendous job and to see the competitive spirit. And the young ladies um slapping that ball around the field, uh they did a few uh slides and it reminded me of uh watching the old Reds. Back in the eighties, uh it was, it was fantastic, yeah, and the board that they had, they're looking to a finish. At one point loss, so they they Anderson defeated them earlier this year by one, one point and. They're looking to a pinch the one run loss earlier this year against the Anderson tonight, so we listened well.
Yeah, I just put a text out, my next play is so we'll see, my brother is paid.
Sectional as well then.
And we had uh.
Voices, voices tomorrow.
The young ladies uh um.
Do we know why they moved from Connersville this year? I I was literally getting in my car to go see my nephew, I realized it was at East.
Eastern.
Eastern and not Connersville. I didn't know Connersville was doing some work on the track and.
We'll find out, but if you, what I what I hear you say is it'd be an opportunity down the road.
Uh I think so.
Okay, we don't want to talk about this for.
I don't know, is it bad?
In regards to graduation, how big's our class this year, I'm just curious.
It's a great question.
Okay, no, just wondered.
Commencement celebrations, we uh celebrated the adult education graduates uh. But uh that always is a amazing event to be a part of, uh to see the recipients of the graduates. And seeing them come across the stage, especially those that uh have gotten down a little bit more in life. But uh have not uh finished their journey and it's great to be a part of that and. Just aim, because I know he was in our our crowd earlier, I guess, departed, but as he's transitioning to his new role, uh he has Mr. Thurler did a tremendous job. Carrying out and coordinating the others.
And then just to touch on the B P A, I know, I know we've often had some top ten national qualifiers. I I don't recall any first place, although I do not know. You know, we have the, I don't know, Hall of Champions at Tierney for Athletics, I don't know if Mister Salm or Mrs. Salm and Mister Amex have anything planned. But I would think some permanent recognition or some. I don't know what that would look like, but I would certainly want to, I mean, like I say, I know we've had top ten. Because I think my son was one at one point, but I think the uh. For those two particularly, I mean, that's pretty impressive.
Or what about, right? By the front office, because I mean, that's where the academic sort of.
However, at the same time, and um I believe B P A operates out of the Career Center. And.
They have some.
But to to your point, to that scale, I don't think we do, but I think, again, just my opinion. Given the fact that there's a lot of frequency, especially in cafeteria, and all students go through that space every day. Having something to honor those B P A and also drum up that much more interest. Um and maybe incentivize others to be a part of it and also continue to highlight the um C T E program. In that respective area of the schoolhouse, I think would be great, but yes, the academic um. Is um it's something that, but I think uh sometimes space is a little scarce there in that hall.
Well, and that kind of makes sense, because we have like the E N T, all, you know, all of the um what those competitions. And they have like their banners and they're, you know, like right by their area, so it would kind of make sense, you know, if you were being consistent.
You really won't know what that wing is, I mean, if you come out of the cafeteria for a meeting or something, there's really nothing, I mean, in the main hall, you have the. The shop classes, or lack of a better term, have their displays, but yeah, I mean, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you have the. Career Center, everything, Oliveane. Programming.
It's prime building.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of uh space and that.
Because then they still have like the nineties career center and it seemed like it's it's. I think the carpet you can't get rid of, it's awesome, but uh but some of the. There may be some walls, where are the stripes, that's upstairs.
Upstairs has made to.
It's like the Mister Worsch's red carpet, I mean, some things.
Okay, uh so I think we are going to transition to a work session, but I am gonna call just a little ten minutes. With break, um and then we will.
Awesome.
Yes.
Let's be slow.
And we're back, and like, and the show hosts. Um, hey. Moving on to our. What are we calling this? Work session. Yes, for facilities use agreement process. So, um, I know, uh, briefly, it was discussed in the policy meeting. We sort of have known, like, hey, let's just meet, um, to kind of. I think we'll talk more about board's philosophy on how we'll see some of these going. Um, as some things have come up recently, I, you know, I think some of us have noticed some, um. I don't want to say discrepancies, just like one policy will sort of reference something, and then it'll reference the admin guidelines, and then we've got space for facilities at another stage, so. Um, what I really wanted to start with was, obviously, there's a lot of historical. Yes, a lot of things that have happened in the past, but in this little big case. Um, I know we got the spreadsheet that sort of broke down some of our groups for how we classify, uh, different community groups or school groups, nonprofits versus, um, for profit. So I just sort of wanted to first start with what we think our philosophy should be. Um, and looking at some of the facility fees spreadsheet. I know there are fees that we are charging, but then there's also fees for staffing, um, or custodial. Um, so when you look at the spreadsheet for, I believe it's year, year, it was last year, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars. Uh. And I know we had a breakdown, didn't we, John? I know you responded on actual staffing fees for that, but. So it sort of comes to a point of, do we want to take the managerial breakdown of these groups? Is it something that our philosophy to really partner with the community? What's the line of how we charge versus we don't charge? Um. Do we make exceptions? Do we not make exceptions? Those are all questions that clearly, you know, admin would get into the nitty gritty about, but. I've heard some things from board members that have been around for a while about, you know, that philosophy, philosophy has changed over the years, so. That's what this work finger, this work session is going to be about. I did print, print out, so there are two board policies, seventy-five-ten and seventy-five-ten-point-oh-one, um, and I highlighted, did you guys see? That talked about facility use, um, and then there are the administrative guidelines. So, um.
On the copy, so you fast out.
Yeah.
There is a highlight, excuse me.
Yeah, okay, yes. And those are just sort of, you know, some of the callouts, um, for this process. Um, just make sure. And, so, does anyone want to start? Do we want to kind of start down? I know there's some historical context, Johnny, kind of brought to how things have changed. Um, but looking at the two policies, cause I think that would be the starting point. Um, one talks about that we don't charge. When we talked about use of corporation physical fitness facilities. Um, assist community participants and recreational users shall not be charged a fee as a condition, or the use of corporation physical fitness facilities or rec facilities. And then we have a use of school facilities, which I do think references, if I'm not mistaken, the admin guidelines. Um. And talks about what's been approved by the superintendent.
Is there any way you can start with just, um, especially since this is public, so publicly, I've seen emails that have gone just like background from maybe about how, uh, from our experts, I guess, the people who have lived it or worked it or followed or whatever, just a quick overview of kind of what we've used, what we've done, I guess.
Yes.
Definitely that way, okay, and the public can understand too.
Yep. That would be great. The scout, what you're gonna say. Sorry, whoever.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can figure out how you want to, uh, to report to that, but I think that, um, prior to, um, admin scout, uh, allude to some of the, uh, procedures and some protocols that have been used. I think, uh, just to your point, to set stage and give a historical backdrop of how we arrived at this conversation. Um, in past practice and in current practice and subsequent practice, there have been, uh, facilities here within corporations that have been utilized by not only our, uh, schools and, and, and extracurriculars, but also by community members and programs, as well as, um, partners that we've met in past practices. So, um, we, just in the nature, in a nutshell, that we're attempting to, um, arrive at, uh, consistency and, uh, a, a level set per se of such protocols. So as to, um, create a, um, a fairer, more way of delivering with our, our facilities. And so, Mrs. Scout, I hope you're still leaving your thunder there with the, uh, the warm holding, uh, but nevertheless, if you can just share, uh, your past practice, how, uh, I know you have a more historical, uh, perspective with, with this, uh, in this particular space, but, uh, within that same, let's not brevity, uh, provide, um, just in some context that we're currently open to, some of the things that the boards will consider in this work session.
Yeah, so, um, I think that there are two fundamental things that we need to discuss, and one is a process. Um, because you have to have a process in order to manage the use of, of what we have anyway. And if there's a problem with that, whether that needs modified or not, um, that has been part of this question and this, this, um, discussion. The other thing is policy and how the board wants to, um, if at all, have a use of facilities option for people. So, um, that's two very different things. Um, one is a much more high-level board discussion. The other is very administrative and it is a little more, um, into the day-to-day work. That I'm not sure that is necessary if the other is, is providing the guiding principles. So I just wanted to clarify that, but those are the two things that are part of what I would consider necessary discussion tonight. Um, for this topic. Um, with that, the general process has been in place and running very seamlessly for longer than I've been here. So, um, with technology, it gets changed from time to time in the method in which you do it. So, prior to a Google form, it was a carbon copy, four-part form that went to every possible department there is, um, available, um, so that everybody had the information. It was signed off by everybody. It was a lot slower because you have to run in our office mail to make it happen. And when, um, we went to operations, we just took that form and put it in a Google format so that our public and our staff could provide very quick, um, responses. This actually made it much simpler for our public, because our public had to come in and fill out the form in past practice before this. This can be done, um, it is a link on our website and or under facilities, and it is super simple. With that, throughout the entire form is the actual guideline. So that all the information is to provided to any person interested at the time when they make the request. So, nothing surprises anybody. We wanted to make sure that it was, um, it was easy for people to see and to know kind of what the, our expectations are, how it works, and any fees associated with it. So, um, all of that is there. The guideline actually existed on the back of the carbon copy form. So this is in keeping with how we've done the process for a very long time and making sure that our public has one hundred percent of the information available to them at the time that they make the request. Because what we all don't want is somebody to be surprised, um. And that it has the goal, and I know it's a lot of verbiage, but it is something that helps quite a bit. Okay, so basically, um, once you get into the format, you can choose options on where you would like to utilize. We actually ask that everybody in the corporation and outside the corporation fill out the same form. And if you can imagine managing fourteen different areas that all have separate areas within them can be a task. And so, we try very hard to identify as much detail as possible at the time of request to make it easier on those approving it and those, um, submitting it so that we don't have to go back and forth. It makes the time much smaller in the ability for us to respond to those requesting. With that, you have options. So at Richmond Community Schools, if you want to use one of our facilities, we offer equipment for your facility use. So we have tables, chairs, security, all of those things that you might need when you use one of our buildings. That is all a part of the form. The fees associated with that are also provided. Um, the teardown and the setup is done by RCS employees. Um, and that is in addition to their routine work. So all of these things are, um, extra for them. Um, and so just keeping that in mind, we try very hard to make sure that this is as, again, detailed as possible so that we know what work needs to be done and, um, what to expect with, with staff. Um, Tiano is a special case. No one can use Tiano without a lifeguard. Um, in fact, depending on the situation and the laws required, sometimes you have to have two. So that is something that, um, we don't always have to provide that for them. Sometimes they will come with certified lifeguards. They do have to provide us with those certifications. Um, and then security, technology technicians, most of this is overtime for our staff. So if it is during their routine hours, we don't charge this, but if it's a part of a weekend or a holiday or an evening, we do charge because that is extra, um, and the corporation, um, our responsibility is school, and so we want to make sure that we can do that. And, um, so staffing is something that at times we cannot do facility use if we don't have staff for. And so we want to make sure all of that is established at the time of request. Um, so all of this is just contact information, and then, um, once you get through all of your forms, uh, or the form, then you have to submit certificate of insurance, and this is required by our insurance company, um, to make sure that we have coverage if there's damage. Um, and then, uh, everything gets scheduled at that point. On the, the facility side of things, we have a facility calendar that is. Um, and then, uh, everything gets scheduled at that point. On the, the facility side of things, we have a facility calendar that is shared. Um, each building has one and it's shared with whoever may be involved. If it's, um, a gymnasium, it's shared with the athletic department as well as the building principals and custodian. If it is for a special event such as McGuire Civic Hall or the Dennis Auditorium, we also include whoever might be handling the, the more finite technology of that. Sometimes it's Mr. Rogan. Sometimes it's John Cook and Mr. Rogan. Um, but anyone who might be working that facility and making sure that they need to know what's on the schedule is in that calendar, um, because you don't want to double book. The other thing is anything at McGuire, we run through the art museum as well because we don't always know about all of the events. Um, they're actually really great to use this form as well. Um, working with Sean and Lance is super easy because everybody agreed this was the most simple way to do it. So it also allows them the opportunity to make sure that, um, their events are secured as well. So it has worked very seamlessly up to now as far as the, the protocols, processes. Um, it has, the processes are provided to administration in review every single year with updates. If the changes will be the approvers and then all of the approving tree, um, information is actually a natural part of this form. So well, um, an example is an athletic facility may go to Mr. Lee first. Once he approves, it'll come to the facilities department, be, uh, because that's kind of the last. So that makes sure everything is taken care of at the building level or at the department level before it gets to the district level. Because if it doesn't work for the department or the building, then they can't work for the district. So that's kind of the overall process. As far as fees go, the facilities department and operations did not determine these fees. We did, um, in the past, uh, administration makes the recommendation for fees to the board and then the board approves all the fees. So all of these have been more approved. They were done in past board meetings. Um, and fees have not been updated with the exception of, um, Kiran Center Civic Hall and McBride in recent past. And, um, that is just simply, um, Civic Hall being the most recent significant change. Um, we try to keep like facilities somewhat similar. Um, it has just served its purpose well, um, in the past. And then, um, what we do ask for, um, at present for not-for-profits, we do ask for their WTI and, um, proof of their tax exemption if we, um, have not worked with them and have not asked for this in the past. So that's how we process in general, um, how all of this works. And then, um, everything else then happens on a case-by-case basis. Um, you do have a policy that allows alcohol use. That is case-by-case and it comes to the board after this, um, point in which we secure the date works for everyone and then we move on to the, to that portion. Um, as well as, um, more longer-term, um, agreements typically may use this form if it works. Um, sometimes you have special relationships that require a special agreement. But we do try to have in writing any use of the forms because not only is it merely required for insurance purposes, um, it also protects the corporation, um, from the unknown. So we often have a lot of people just kind of show up through our facilities. And, um, we also get the calls when things are not good at that point. And so, um, when we don't know who's there or why they're there, it can create difficulties in, in knowing what's going on. So that's why it's super important that we have had this process in place and that it has been as, as solid as it has in management.
And then, Mrs. Scout, just to conclude as far as with such, um, a backdrop, you've, um, shared, and I think it's great that we're informing our public, uh, and educating the public about certain processes, procedures, protocols, um, and the importance of always making sure that on that next day, arriving at that next day, we have to be ready for school and be ready for, um, for, for school functioning. Uh, however, the term that you've used, and I think this goes back to the work session that we had last week and reading for it's already, we have a long meeting together, but, uh, you've used the term seamless a few times, uh, it's in the stage. And I think that of the conversation we had during our last work session, um, we recognize the opportunity to continue to educate our, our community, educate those that, uh, would like to continue to partner with us, um, as to how to create such a seamless experience. Um, because of what you alluded to, at times, I think just again, final setting of the stage in the backdrop. At times, uh, we have had, uh, community members not understanding the nature of what's requested, uh, stumble upon our, our facilities and utilize fields and or, um, uh, said facilities and not really had an opportunity to, to understand what, um, what all entails, the utilization of such facilities and so on. Hopefully, uh, the member Pickery, that was something that worked out.
Yeah. And just to give the public an idea about how many requests are.
So since January of twenty-four, um, there have been over eight hundred requests for internal and external use.
And most of those are the internal, the city directly for our students.
Correct. Priority is always Richmond Community Schools, um, needs an event. Um, our students and our programs come first at all times. So that is the majority of use, yes.
And these particular processes, protocols that are in place and currently in place are customary and traditional in other corporations and districts across the county, state, and those companies.
I think that the issue that was most recent that Campbell Light was a, um, a historic user. New fees were levied and then there was some communication issues. I don't know exactly what happened, but I think their point being a, I don't even know if it's a nonprofit, but a, a, a organization with, with pretty minimal resources. But obviously, a, what I would consider, uh, uh, they drill correctly with students and, and a clear community partner, RCS partner. Um, how do we, if you will, are the board impressed, I guess, is the question? And, and streamlining the process for, you know, it's not, I mean, obviously you would expect RAM to have other ducks in a row. I mean, you'd expect Boys and Girls Club, you'd expect, you know, established corporations or, or companies. But when you have, you know, let's say, uh, you know, Girl Scout group wanting to have a meeting in the cafeteria, I would argue that that would be something that we should be able to address. Girl Scouts of America obviously has, has a, a, a nonprofit, but, but the local troop would not, I don't believe, but I don't know. Um, but how do we provide a welcoming, um, simplified process for kind of these smaller organizations? But I think, and again, I don't know where the board, I mean, I would argue that our facilities are paid for by property taxes and therefore as a citizen of the, the Richmond, you pay for these facilities. You have as much right as anyone to utilize them. Um, and I think it's in the best, I think, I've always been an open door. Our best recruiting tool is to have people in our facilities. So that's kind of where I come from. But I, I think we don't want to, I mean, these organizations are, they don't, they're volunteer ran, they don't have paid administrators. I mean, there's somehow, I think the system works really good for large organizations. But I think we could, could maybe improve upon and maybe even it's a different form. And, and I don't know if it's a case-by-case. I mean, obviously you're saying you have money to pay, so pay. You don't have money to pay. Don't, I mean, I don't know. We can't get in that business. Um, but somehow I think for admins benefit, a little more clarity, I think.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was coming from and how could we sort of try to make those overarching decisions so you all aren't having to decide these, this fits in this category, this fits in this category. To me, that, that's where I see it getting. And nobody wants to decide that at all. Um, and as we've seen, like, some other organizations, maybe they were in talks to kind of be a nonprofit or sort of go that route and then, you know, positions change, people change, and then it just gets really messy. And I don't think we want that. So it's like, how can we help support to maybe group these organizations differently to make it easy, right? So, um, you know, yes, we charge for certain things and we need to do that? Or do we, do we need to do that? I mean, I think that's kind of my question of like, do we need to, outside of some of these really large, I mean, I think, for example, the colleges, right? They have multi-million dollar facilities. We want to encourage them to partner. But there is also money there to help support versus a small organization. So, you know, is that really the, the breakdown we need to go? So we're not.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, yeah, the, I mean, I, I think we do charge because I think we provide value for organizations like traditional nonprofits and, and organizations that have permanent staff that have, you know, people that can do. But I, I think, you know, we had a presentation for a marketing proposal, it was thirty thousand dollars. Let's say we dropped away all the fees from last year, that's twenty thousand dollars. I think you can make an argument that that twenty thousand is better invested invested with our community partners than on marketing. Cause I think and I'm not advocating we do that, but I think, you know, we're not talking about huge dollars that we're bringing in. And yes, I know we did put additional labor on our people, but then maybe even you look at that, I think there's even options to maybe get around that. But, uh, but I, I think we have to decide. I mean, is that what the board wants to do? I mean, that's what I think we should do. But I don't know where the rest of the board is. Cause in the past, the argument's been ours, and this kind of goes to the, the bigger question than facility uses. The argument goes, you should be an RCS student to utilize these facilities. And it's been a much more tighter, and that's how the board has voted. And that's been the majority of the board opinion, I think, over the years. I think we kind of, it's always kind of a fif, close to fifty-fifty. Um, and this isn't exactly that case, but it's, it's, are we, do we want people in the buildings or do we want to, no, you can come, but you're gonna have to come to school first, which I think is a valid argument. I mean, it's, I think either, it's not, one is right and one's wrong. It's just, where do you want to lie on the, the totem?
Well, I've seen too, I mean, I think there's some verbiage somewhere that says, like, if a RCS employee coaches a team, there's no fees. Well, that's clear with kind of what happened with one of the programs. An RCS coach, coaches were coaching. They might not be, or one of them isn't this year, so suddenly do they have to pay? Like, that's, that's where I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we ease this up? Because that's a hard thing, right? You can't, if we want to follow the policy that would say, yeah, you had an RCS employee coached you last year. They're not coaching you this year, so you've got to pay a hundred fifty bucks an hour, right? Like, how, that doesn't make any sense. So, but then you want to give the benefit to RCS employees. I'm not saying there's a, a a right or wrong answer. I just, that's where it gets messy.
Are we, are we talking only about for-profit organizations or nonprofit? Like, I, I think there should be some clarification, I guess, because.
Rethink girls have no status organizations.
Right. So I mean, for whatever status is, I guess, if there's no status, to me, that means it's for-profit. Otherwise, I don't know, but is that the distinguishing? Maybe Karen, you can answer that. Does that kind of send people a funnel? Or like, obviously if you are, you know, Steve Jones asking for it to use for a spelling bee, which I saw, then right, it goes a funnel, you know?
Like, that's an RCS request.
Right.
And so it really is RCS programs. Do they contain all of RCS students? And that drives, that means it's an RCS program. So it may not even be like RCS, but it's only RCS kids involved. So example, Girl Scouts. We have troops that use the buildings. The leader will fill it out for their meeting times and days and then they'll, they'll fill this out. They actually can provide not-for-profit forms, um, from the district office. And, um, that has been the most, um, simplified way to de-define who's the for-profit, who's the not-for-profit. Because even, um, like some of the smaller teams that we're starting to see with some of the new fields that we have have not-for-profit, like they have the tax exempt forms or they will have, like, they, they actually have those. And so that has been the simplest way for us to identify. Um, as far as coaches using, um, some of that is driven by, are they charging kids to participate in what they're doing? And is it, like, because if it's RCS activities that runs through the athletic department? But we may have, and this is just because, I mean, my kid did it for years. You may have a, an outside person who happens to work for us, but they may give lessons for something on the side and they may charge for that. That is making profit on that time. So we typically will charge them for the use of that facility if that's what they're doing. Oftentimes, some will do like just clinics and they're free, but that usually runs through the athletic department. So we try very hard to make sure that it's truly not-for-profit, um, and, or it's an RCS program. So that we, I mean, it, it hasn't been difficult typically to identify because people tend to have the forms.
Right.
And, and they're really, I mean, it's very rare people are not able to talk through it and we, we figure it out. So, yeah.
And so, okay, so those seem more clear-cut. So the non-clear-cut is when you have an organization or a person who wants to use our facilities who has students from around their community, let's say, and not necessarily RCS. So if they're not-for-profit or they are for-profit, how are those dealt with?
If they can provide the forms that show that they're not-for-profit, then they go in the not-for-profit, right?
Okay.
So as long as they can provide that form, the one thing that, um, then it's like free or not free, right? So if they provide services to multiple places, that might not mean that they're in RCS programs. So they may get that not-for-profit rate if they've provided that not-for-profit, that tax exemption form.
Okay.
So that's how that drives that. If they can't provide the forms, then they go into the commercial or the for-profit because we have no way of proving that they are not-for-profit.
And I think that's one of the points of reference that we had during the last work session. So that therefore we can educate the community as to the importance of completing the forms and provide us with the information, uh, via the forms so as to then not only determine their status, but also to make sure and assure that we accommodate their, their requests.
So are then there some discrepancies or are there some, like, this, this method we've been using has not been working? Or, I mean, I guess I just need to understand it, where, where, where are the unclear parts? I guess I, I mean, I've looked through the spreadsheet and I'm just trying to better understand.
I can't answer, I, I don't know for a mar and is that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think here of Lathan and of what we, uh, have, um, been in conversation about as far as the, the, the latest, um, challenges or inconsistencies, I think, lie in some of the turnover that has occurred, um, in athletics over the past, uh, several years, uh, as well as, um, inconsistency when it comes to, um, making sure that protocols are being implemented, understood, uh, explained. Uh, and so I think, uh, to, to answer your question, Mrs. Bron, I think, um, I would remember Pickery, uh, just alluded to, I think, um, here, I think it was the major, uh, challenge in the service that at one point with RCS athletic employees, uh, conducting sessions, um, had no charge. Now there's a charge associated because of, again.
I don't know. I don't know why a charge someone would have thought men levied it against a certain group. I, on the spreadsheet, I saw a couple of line items they were for B and then one line item they were for C. So that just, you know, hearing from the community and they're confused. And I think, like, first, the, the process is, right? I went through the Google Doc, like.
I did too.
Like, I mean, that makes sense. I don't think anyone's questioning that. I just want to
Yes.
make that clear. Um, it's the questions we get to is when I can't answer. And then it seems, um, you know, I look at it from like. You know, I look at it from like, I wanna be efficient and effective, like, I don't want you all to have to, like. Even though you guys probably have it down, right? We have a shift, and then it's a whole new crew, like, like, how can we just make this easy and streamlined? Versus, uh, do they have this, this, are they charging, you know, like, student council? The prom, they got charged seven hundred and ninety dollars, which I would argue, like. Why do we charge them these, this, this star dinner building? But that's just me, right? I'm not saying that. It's subjective, I feel like, a little bit. And I wouldn't wanna charge that group, there's some alumni groups, I think. I know we don't charge, like, the fiftieth and the seventy-fifth.
Yeah, and that's where, yeah, no, that's where I.
For security at that point.
And that's. Where I think, you know, the line item of, you know, we don't really charge if it's during certain hours, but we do whenever we can. OT, which is a whole nother question of, how do we? Compensate on a tight budget, um. So those are the, the questions, it just seems. There's a lot of, for me, there's just a lot of this, 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 like, you're going through the whole. List, and why do we wanna make it that complicated? Or do we wanna charge a little bit to nonprofits and stigmatize it? You know? That's just very.
I mean, I think when we put the turf in, there was a big effort to utilize the million-dollar investment. And I think we were inviting lots of groups, uh, just. Not wrongly, but just, yeah, come use our field, and it was kind of just scheduled, and this was, this would have been what, twelve years ago. And so, I, I, I think it, uh. But I think that's good, I think that's what we should be doing, and I, I think we want more people using our facility. But how do you protect the corporation? Provide an excellent experience for the people using the facilities, do not hamper in any way the work that's done day, late, here. I mean, it's, 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 uh, cause once again, I mean, I think we've just lived in a, a recent experience. And I think we've left a bad taste in some people's mouths, and that's hard to recover. It, uh. And so. And, and from all accounts, it was probably as much on them as us, but, you know, we, we should either make things, so. It's. I don't, I don't, I understand.
I think two words that I, um, in our first discussion of this during our policy meeting. Um, the two words that I had said, I'd really like to just make sure that we're doing, are, um, consistent and communicate. Uh, whatever we land on, I would just like to see that clearly communicated, um, so that, that everybody knows what to expect. Um, and then consistent, if, if we're doing one thing with this group, we need to do the same with another, you know? Um, so I guess I just would like to throw that into this conversation, um, you know, you guys heard me say it the other day, but just, um. I feel like there shouldn't be any surprises, you know, um, and, I mean, the question that was asked, I'm hearing it tonight, and. At the first conversation was, what should we be doing differently, what could we be doing differently? I still am not hearing anything specifically, um, but again, maybe this is a good time to just pause and say. Hey, let's make sure we're doing it well and doing it right, so, um. Yeah, so, those are, yeah, just those two words, consistent and communicating.
And I think, I think I guess, I don't, I don't know, maybe you can tell us where it's been running smoothly beside this one incident. Have we had other ones, or are we taking this one situation? I don't know, and, and maybe it's just a realization, it needs to be revamped, I don't know, but have there been complaints, are there issues? That haven't been, so I know we have a new person in this position, and we've had other, you know, so has that process changed?
I, I think that it boils down to what Dr. Wright said, is that, you know. If, if things, that's why this form has been so great, is if everyone does this, we typically don't have those inconsistencies and those questions. When it doesn't get followed in process, then that's where there may have been things happen. That maybe we have no record of before, and so, things can happen sometimes when there are turnovers. And there are changes that, it, that's why processes are so important. And like, just routines and, and internal controls to make sure that it can be consistent. Um, that typically is where we have the most issue, the, um. Every once in a while, we will get a community member that wants to use a facility that we, we just cannot make work, and that. It's an exception, and we try really hard to make things work, but we can't do everything, and so that's where sometimes that will lead to. Um, things that, that, you know, people may say, or, or things like that. But typically, we try really hard to make it work, and our staff is really fantastic. Because we have all of our events, and then they're still doing all these extra. And it is a lot, it's a lot of time away from their families, it is a lot of time that is their time. And, um, and it's not for our programs sometimes, and so that, um, I, I just cannot. I cannot give our staff, um, kudos enough, because especially at RHS. I mean, it is, it is nearly a twenty-four-seven job sometimes, um, when it is a super busy season. And that is very hard on them, and it's hard on their families, and so that's where, um. Just making sure that that process stays consistent has helped the most. But what we see, or tend to see in the most challenging areas of things, what Dr. Wright said, just in, in not following that process.
Does, does it make sense to, right, we wanna accommodate, but if we have. We don't want staff burnout, right? Like, yes, they're getting paid OT, but is it also something the board can? Or we wanna maybe do these specific hours, right, so we're. Because do you accept something, knowing we, and you haven't talked to know if we can staff it yet? Like, how does that?
Yeah, actually, most of the time I will ask if we, especially if it's an odd time or a day that we're not in business. Um, or have other activities, we, we try to pre-staff, so we know. Cause I've had to, to not sign requests because we could not find staff. So we try really hard to make sure we can cover it before we say yes, um, and.
I think the challenges that we experienced, um, pre-COVID and definitely COVID, it is. Pretty cool, but I can recall many of our. They would sign up for overtime, and they would sign up to work these events, um, literally now. Uh, especially with some of the, uh, positions going on field, uh, and that much more, uh, of attacks on one. Those personnel members during the school day, during the school week, uh, they're not as readily signing up for, for such, such extended services. I saw, uh, numerous pieces of, yeah.
Sir Bowen, excuse me, I have no voice. Ms. Cow, I'll be contacting you because the usage of some of our elementary schools, uh. The police department, uh, would like to speak with administration about it. Of having monthly safety, uh, safety, uh. Crime watch and neighborhood safety meetings for about an hour, hour and a half in some of our, uh, elementary schools. To develop a greater relationship between, uh, the police department and neighbors. And also encourage them to become more involved with the local, uh, uh, neighborhood schools.
And I would, uh, remember Pickery just alluded to, and you all, uh, know how much I love history, but historically speaking. Uh, Schoolhouse has played a significant role as that community home base. And, uh, to Mr. Webber's point, uh, given the fact that our schools operate, and there's a lot of bill of tax, um, tax dollars. And to, remember Pickery, I'm sorry, remember Stevens just alluded to, uh, we definitely want to try and continue to. To, to exercise those options, uh, and meet all requests. However, uh, it also was alluded to earlier, this particular school corporation that pulled up. Now, Carmel Clay Schools, uh, they're in Carmel, and I, I just put, and I, I, I know, I, I, I alluded to it earlier. As far as our process being really in lockstep and consistent with most others around the county, state, and the country. But as it says here, um, there were Carmel website, facilities are available only to local groups or organizations. We can provide the district with liability insurance, uh, it goes into, and I think this is something for us to, to. The reason why I'm, I'm referencing this is maybe something for us, the education standpoint on our website, uh, to continue the model. We have some great, uh, intel and, and, and education, but they somewhat break it out here, what is the process? Will we use such, uh, fill a secret usage agreement is first, and within two weeks of the bank's, it's a state. Send the completed agreement and certified viability directly to the school, the certificate of viability must include the following. Uh, then goes on to top-up charges, uh, will there be a charge, fees are assessed by business office. In accordance with the district's administrative guidelines, I tried to log you in to see if they have a similar fee schedule as, as we. But it requires me to be a part of the Carmel Clay Schools Board for the doc. But, yeah, a lot of what we have been doing is consistent with, was done elsewhere, uh, I think they're. Uh, they also make another notice, provide liability because it's an amount not less than one million dollars per conference, and so. I think to, remember still to this point, uh, throughout force of foundation. There are things that we could be improving upon, improve the better, we're definitely over here.
I would recommend that Karen, my recommendation is that Karen look through the policy and the guidelines and tell us. Is there something that's in this that you're not doing? And or that it needs to be remote, like, give us some recommendations, just like we had Alex go through our technology to kind of bring back to the policy meeting. And then I'd love to see, like, a flow chart, a visual for people, I think can be helpful for people too, where I'm a nonprofit, I've got only RCS. However, that looks to make it understandable, or not that it isn't in all of these words, but in the twenty pages. I think it'd be helpful to understand if I'm wanting the facility, what route I'm in, because I'm a prophet, but I have all RCS, right? How does that? And then I'd also just add that I'm, I'm not in favor of making exceptions to, like, things, I don't think it's a good policy for a board. Not in favor of just saying, well, we've done it, I mean, if we need to, we're trying to fix something and make it the way it should be, I think we should. Otherwise, who gets to decide what exceptions are made for who and for what reason? It just, it creates this tumbling effect that is issues, so that's just my thoughts.
Just to tack on to that, some of the feedback I saw was in athletics and operations. Not that you guys are not handling it right, I think, I, like, they get confused, right? I might have talked to Mr. Lee about this, but they get a response from, you know, you or Mr. Walton. So that flow chart, um, just the, like, it's, this. Like, I'm not a hater, like, I'm, just the flow chart of, like, it's an athletic request. You might have talked to Mr. Lee or the athletic tournament, but now you're getting a response from over here. And then if there's a follow-up, you know, they're not like, well, I talked to so-and-so earlier. So I, I think that could be, that that might just, that visual. Cause you guys, you know, you clearly kind of have those steps outlined and.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Lee and I actually, like, what we do as departments, we talk before anything is approved. Um, typically before it's even at the starting point, so that we can make sure everybody hears the, the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, and so we try really hard to do that, so, um, when that happens, please send them our way. Cause we, we try really hard to make sure that we're communicating at the very first step, so there isn't that at any time during the process.
Yeah, um, I had a question, you'll save mine, no. What is the difference between short-term and long-term? Like, is there a definitive timeline, cause I know some of the long-term, it all says, you know, needs to be approved by the board, but. What is that, are we?
So typically, um.
It is, it's in the admin guidelines, page three.
Um, typically, longer term means that it's more than just the period of the, this four-year part. So, or it means that they want an ongoing relationship, so that's something that, um. I'll give you an example, when we do things with IU East, oftentimes, it's not, like, it's not just for a season. It might be for, they wanna do two years, or they might wanna be, um, a longer term, so that. The, you know, we have things established so that both them and us can schedule accordingly. Um, so longer terms are pretty rare, I will, I will tell you that typically, things don't go beyond a season. Um, and unless it's something with, like, I, typically, IU East, um. When we were looking at the Shakespeare Festival, um, we used, they used to use McGuire routinely. And that, um, and we had looked at expanding that, and for, you know, when they got post-COVID, what did that look like? That would have been a longer-term agreement, should we have decided, you know, that, that they were going to do that. Um, things like that are longer term, it's more than just that one period of time, so.
Okay, um, the other question, which just left my brain. Oh, um, well, part of the question is. I know, I don't think it's on the table on here anywhere, so it's, you know, I know, like. It says, like, fields, but. If we break down, I mean, we can say fields, we can call it whenever we want, I think there should just be that. And maybe that's something that gets outlined in the board's policy, and, you know.
It says RHS tracking, you know, so that, but on the fee schedule, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I see, maybe you need to maybe tell me where you're thinking. Maybe I was looking for Michael.
Exactly.
Oh, tracking, okay, sorry, I did not see that, I was looking for Michael.
And we can add that, if you, I mean, that could always be added.
So, um, not to keep going, but, yeah. I mean, the, I guess my, the, 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 the problem solver. So in an email text, we've talked about these Group A, B, and C organizations. And I can't find any reference to how those are determined in any documentation. So someone is just determining that based on something, I, I don't know what that is. It seems like if an organization, so like, for, for. So, the, uh, an A or group organization is an RCS school-related group and partnership, and they're not charged for facilities. So, I think maybe the solution would be a, how do you apply for the A group organization? I mean, I think the definition, RCS school-related groups and partnerships is fairly broad. And has a, I mean, could be interpreted maybe too broad even, but maybe you need the A, B, C, and D groups, I don't know. But, but if there was a path, it's okay, we're a small organization, if we could just prove to you that we're a worthy partner. And get that A group classification, then we wouldn't have to worry about charging stuff. And then I also think that there is the outside versus inside, while both have, I'm not saying outside is not maintenance-free. But there is distinct differences between an outside facility and an inside, so. And so, I, I, to go back, I think if we could get that classification nailed down, whether it was an appeal process. And I may even say that needs to be board-approved, I think that could be superintendent-approved, I mean, I don't, but to me, that seems where the, the. You know, so if I'm Richmond Premier Soccer, let's say, how do I become a Group A organization?
So, for example, I have criteria, uh, that folks reply to, or like, that, and other ones, if you fit this particular mold.
I mean, if we're using these definitions, they should be written down somewhere.
It, I'm all, um, if you can pull up policy seventy-five-ten, but, I'm, Miss Pickery provided that.
Seventy-five-ten, zero-one or seventy-five-two?
Uh, just seventy-five-ten, so it provides the outline of those groups. And then the form is determined based on those outlines. So in A, it says directly related to the schools and the operations of the schools. And then B through I, or B through H, provides various not-for-profit options. Those all have a form that is associated with not-for-profit that they can provide us. And then I begins commercial or profit-making, so I and J provide that. So it is outlined, it's just in the policy, it's not in the administrative guide. So it is outlined, it's just in the policy, it's not in the administrative guideline. So we're following, based on the board policy, those groups, those three groups. And we just labeled them A, B, and C, but they also say relate RCS-related, civic, not-for-profit. And then commercials, because we wanted to match that to the policy. And we can take rid of, I mean, we can get rid of group A, B, and C and just leave it at RCS civic or commercial. And then we re-label group B and C into labels of not-for-profit or for-profit if that's preferred. If that is what is causing confusion, we can definitely do that. That's just a simplification of the form at that point.
I think that's the gist of it, just trying to find, most supply users written like.
Yeah, I mean, what what was sent in the email, I I think is different than what's in these policies. I mean, it's similar, but related group and partnership is direct, I mean, it it's not the same. And it's, you know, I, you know, I love the wordsmith. So I mean, I don't know which is right. I mean, the board, I guess, needs to decide. I mean, maybe let's go back to policy meeting, then we can tweak that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're pointing that out, that's very helpful in this, cause I didn't read it like that at all either. But I think the confusion between A and B, it's almost like, do you combine those? And then priorities given to RCS school groups and, you know, I keep going back to that. We're not charging when we're staffed, but why not just charge what we charge even when we have staff, right? Because we're still offsetting salaries if we, they're still using the facilities. We charge commercial when we're staffed. I mean, like, there are, there are, it's just that, you know, if.
Yeah.
So I think that we have, that's the part, consistency is everything.
Right.
And so right now, we have a very consistent process. And um if we wanna change that, that's fine, but we will need to probably modify the policy. In the fashion in which that that needs to go, because the implementation of what's being done now is is based on this policy. And solely on this policy, it's not done based on anything except that. But here's my other question with fees. Is, is it something that you can take back and kind of look and say, you know, like the inside versus outside, right? Label to a hundred and fifty dollars. The pool was. Um, I can't read.
A hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, yeah. For group C, yes, but it seems like the whole operation is. Be more cost than. So I just, do you, do you see that the fees need tweaked, addressed? Wanna see it, cause.
I mean, we can look at it, but there are utilities.
What I, what I would say, I apologize, what I would say is that I'm serious and and. Excited to learn is what some of our um conference counterparts, uh what some of their fee schedules look like. As well as other fee schedules in other corporations and gyms uh that are of similar demographics uh and also deal with the same. Challenge when it comes to staffing, when it comes to utilities, when it comes to those things. Because to your question, this is an opportune time for us to revisit the fees. Most importantly, I think that's one of the things that we won't be discussing at the board is whether or not to even have those. Or what they could look like, so we'll get that um, we'll we'll peek into what others are doing. Get that information to them.
And I look at things like classrooms are fifteen, but RHS classrooms are twenty-five. Why won't we make all the classrooms twenty? Right, like, it 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 just seems like a, a lot of different things. You guys are in it every day and just to communication-wise and so people know. What they're looking at and what we're charging, it's like, that's. We're obviously not doing this to make money. We're doing this to help support the staff and um. But let's also make it easy on ourselves. I I I could probably guess that this was done. Like fees were probably fully vetted out at one point and broken down. And now you're at the point of like, well, do you just average some of those out and just make? Make it the same. But I think these two need to go back to the policy. Right, it's seventy-five-ten-oh-one. I mean, it calls out physical fitness facilities separately, but to me, those, they get a little confusing. If someone's looking at this for.
I would be interested to know if that policy, like when that policy was implemented. Because I wonder sometimes, especially the corporations who are now doing um like uh open gyms for um communities. Um I'm wondering if maybe that policy was a direct result of that. I don't really know.
We mass approved it in February twenty-four without reading it, so. Um but yes, I mean, I I think once you read into it, you can see that it's clearly meant for something else. But if someone just picks this up and thinks about an athletic facility. It gets right there, gonna interpret it that way, but that's on us for these two.
I mean, just like, just to go back to my group thing, so I guess we have ten groups if we go A to J. That's correct. And I don't know how many fee structures you would have. I would hope not ten fee structures. But I uh it just, I mean, you know, this is why I was going down the rabbit hole. Yeah, ideally, each group would have a fee structure, not going to group. Two free such, like free and not free, I mean, maybe that's, that's kind of what we do now. So maybe half these, I don't, but yeah, well, I think in policy meeting, we could maybe go through some of those. Cause I, at some point, we're spending a lot of time and effort for very little return.
That's kind of the underlying when I started with it, like, it does, it seems like, you know, because we're not doing this to make money. But it's a long work administrative, I mean, we still have to collect the approvals and the forms. But.
And I think it's so important for our community members to have good experiences, because bad ones have bad reputations. And so what that lines is, I mean, without putting undue burdens upon our staff. I think positive experience, very positive interaction with RCS is crucial at every level.
Like, does it, maybe I shouldn't ask this question, but does it help if there's? A more streamlined and you aren't worrying about fees? So like, we can, we look at those groups, A through J, just sort of make it a little more clear. These three groups, this, this, and this, these, whatever it is. But administratively, does that free up any time effort? If, A, there's no fees and you guys are just handling the approvals and the money is just magically there? Forget you're a finance person. Forget that for a second. Like, but is that, is there value in that without talking about the money we're losing?
So.
If that's from a procedural standpoint.
If it doesn't free up anything, then that's the answer.
I don't know that it frees up anything so much as it does provide for better care of the facility while it's in use when we do charge. So.
Got it.
People are more apt to care for the facility when they have. When, e- exactly, and they want it returned in the same state or better than it was provided.
If we had the Weber family reunion at no charge using Lipo, I don't know if that's in the best interest of the RCS. You know, if I, if I don't pay and I can get the field. I mean, so how do you then, that's a pretty rough crowd, don't you think?
I've heard they're pretty large as well, so you would need like, yeah.
It'd be a great experience. Why not rent that Lipo for your family reunion? It'd be awesome. But I think at some point, yeah, that fee structure also deters some of that.
That's a really good point.
And that frivolous that. You know, we can't, we are not at that level.
I get that.
And just, just to continue to contribute to the conversation, and of course, this will be fleshed out another time, if you're interested. I know that hearing back from our uh school insurer, all currently happening place. It's something that uh has been committed and and highly encouraged that we we uh remain consistent. Because it's, it makes that work to more effective decisions and covers a lot of bases.
Um, any other questions, comments?
The only thing I would ask, because we bring this to a close is uh based on where we ended during the last work session. I say assume that's where it currently stays until we've been arrived at.
I think, I don't know if there's any other policies on the agenda, but.
Stacey's just been pulling from, or Stacy, Stacy, Stacy's been pulling from our list every time, so I'm trying to aim for ten.
Actually, we're about, I think you might be finishing that, so we are working on the updates.
Yeah, I would add those, yes, for sure.
There are a couple others that that Alzmaier and I uh identified today.
I think it'll help clean up our language um and then if that leads into the admin guidelines. Just matching those groups, terminology, whatever.
I would move forward and explore that question that you both asked, far as just hypothetically speaking, if there were no fees.
Yeah, what, in a perfect world, I play this game all the time. In a perfect world, what would you like, Scal? Mr. Lee, what would you like?
It's, we'll, we'll get those answers to.
You know, it's like start there and work back.
Me and Mr. Lee will work on the new scoreboard. I heard he's got some experience.
A little birdie told me too that we made the records for a new flag at Lipo also. Since we have a very small practice. So if you know anyone that likes to contribute flags to. Okay. Review upcoming meetings and events. We have the class of twenty-twenty-five graduation now on Sunday, June first at two P M. That's here then. Um just in time for eighty-degree weather. Um rolling in, uh oh, seventy-two, we're good. Then we are having a board and administration retreat on Tuesday, June third. Over Earl, which I have been over, that'll be, sorry.
Great camps, great school.
It's an amazing institution.
Summer, so. You know, hopefully not get in trouble. And then our next school board meeting is Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty-five, at five-thirty. Yeah, so we're already in June. So uh last item adjournment and fell over here, Dr. Ray.
President Pickering, trusting to the glass that Mrs. Hazel Baker rejoins for a third and final time this evening.
Just want to share some exciting news that we had last Sunday at the race. We had three Richmond High School students that marched in the five-hundredth grade. And then we also had a former alum and she was a five-hundred princess, Zoe Brock. So um Bailey, Isabella, and Amy were our band members. And I also wanted just to highlight Mrs. Scal and her team, um we announced the summer feeding schedule. Um health and food and all the kids that are signing up for for meals right now, it's amazing. Families can pick up on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays here at the high school, um but they need to register, you must register first for those. And then we also have onsite meals at Charles, at the splash pad, and at Port Elpool. That families can get um get meals there as well. And then lastly, um I just want to highlight Mr. Lee and the summer athletic camps coming up too. So those are all on our websites and um they're on social media channels and on Parents Square. So again, um kudos to Mrs. Scal. Thank you.